Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I'll call for the roll call by Madam Clerk.
Ms. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here. We're all gonna be here for a long night, please be comfortable, but before we start, there's one thing I think we can all agree on, and that would be our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all please rise, we'll call the Boy Scouts forward.
Y'all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, be here.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Color guard, prepare to post colors. Post colors. Color guard salute. Two. Color guard regroup. Color guard dismissed.
Thank you, please be seated. Our invocation tonight is Father Andrew Green from the Church of St. Paul in the Desert. Evening, Andrew.
Good evening. We've got a possibly contentious issue tonight, and obviously I represent one side of that, but I think I also represent a community that cares about solutions, and a community that's elected you as the council to make decisions. So if you would join me as we pray and invoke God to help us. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the men and women who offer themselves for service on this city council, for city staff, for police, for firemen, and we ask that you would also bless them as they are here tonight to deliberate. We ask that you would likewise bless all the members of our community, from the richest to the poorest, from the first to the last, that every member of our community might leave this meeting knowing that they have been valued, and that whatever the decisions that may come, that you would show us ways to work together, to build a better Palm Springs for all of our residents, and this we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Andrew. I'll ask anyone with a cellphone or pager to place it on silent or meeting, so it does not disrupt the proceedings tonight. Thank you. That includes council members, based on earlier performances. There are no presentations scheduled tonight, I'll ask for a report on the posted agenda, please, by Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday, February 28th. Item CRA-A is being withdrawn by the Executive Director, therefore there will be no necessity for the agency to meet tonight. The council has also today faxed some materials from my office regarding item 11. If you do not have those materials, I do have extra copies here for you. In addition, you do have a folder in front of you that is being provided by my office. Those are letters that we have received in the office of the city clerk, subsequent to the providing of your packet materials. So those are additional letters received Monday and Tuesday, and today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll turn to our City Attorney, Mrs. David Alshire, for a report on closed session matters. Mr. Alshire?
Yes, council and agency met in closed session. Items listed, real property negotiations with Ruth Markovitz involving Plaza Theater, we gave a staff report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations with CBM Properties concerning the property center fell in Indian, we gave a staff report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations involving the Palm Springs Youth Center, we gave a staff report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations with Desert Healthcare District concerning the Catherine Finchey School Site, we gave a staff report, no action was taken. The items listed concerning exposure to litigation and initiation of litigation were not discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Alshire. The Housing Authority, the Financing Authority, the Industrial Development Authority, and now the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Agency, have no business scheduled for tonight's meeting. First item before the city council is public comments. Now I have a number of cards here for testimony on item 11, and we will call those individuals when that item on the agenda is brought forward. This is public comments for anyone wishing to address the council on matters within the jurisdictions. I have one card on file, Ms. Ruth Frazee, please. Ruthie? Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments, please come forward at this time. We'll have three minutes, and we welcome your comments. Good evening.
Hi. I'd like to voice my opinion about consistency, or rather, the lack of consistency. About a year ago, I came here to please ask the council to vote to allow bike weekend. I further followed up my plea with an email to you, Mr. Mayor. I begged all of you to not react to basically a form of terrorism. I watched the council study session last week, and I couldn't believe what I was hearing. Many of the people that were here last year asking you to please vote against bike weekend, were now here asking you to do the exact opposite, which I'm glad that you did, but I'd still like to know what changed other than the revenue that many of us said that we would be losing. I don't think I misunderstood, but I still don't think that you got the complete support from the police last week, which last year, that's what you were taking their advice on. And then in January, I sent an email to the council expressing how upset I was about a variance that was being applied for, since I had gone through a very expensive nightmare that I don't feel I got one ounce of consideration from this city about. And I'd like to know what has changed. The codes had not been amended. So again, I have to bring up the word consistency. Not a bitter homeowner, I'm a very concerned citizen on many different issues, and I won't go into it tonight, but you can see by the badge that I'm wearing how I would request that you vote, and I know that my opinion is going to be echoed over and over again. So it's just...
I can't see it.
Item 11.
What's it say, your badge?
That we're anti-for item 11.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments? Again, I'll call those with cards for testimony during item 11 at that time. No one else on public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. We'll turn now to the consent calendar. Members of the council, items 1 through 8 are a single action. If there are any items you want to pull for questions, separate votes, or to note your abstentions, please do so at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rose Spurgeon?
I need to abstain on warrant 985027, husband-related.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I need to abstain on item 6, work-related. I'm doing work for a project at that intersection. And number 8, one warrant, 985039, business-related.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Any questions or comments on other items, otherwise we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Rose Spurgeon, and second by Mr. Oden. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, it's 5-0, it's deemed unanimous. We'll turn to our first public hearing, which is item number 9, which is case number 3.2283, and tentative parcel map 30868, Brown and Weiner Social Security Building. Mr. Ready, I'll turn to your staff for their report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a tentative track map, and Mr. Evans, our Director of Planning, will give the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a tentative map, it's for a subdivision on Ramone Road, Ca' Santa Cruz, Ca' Camino Paracella, and Paseo Dorothea. There's a subdivision of property, one lot, two, three, four, five, and a sixth. This parcel is not a part, that's the existing Desert Animal Hospital, a fairly new building. The item before the council is just the approval of the subdivision plot. One of the conditions is there's no direct access allowed on Ramone Road, so it has side access off of the side streets. An associated item that's not on the council agenda, but I'd just like to show it to you, it was an architectural approval item that was final with the Planning Commission, is a new building that the developers would like to compete for a new social security building. It's an all-tilt-up, concrete structure, and all of the overhangs core-tin steel, as well as the gates and wind control devices. This project was approved unanimously by the commission several weeks ago, so the item before the council is the approval of the subdivision map. That completes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Council, questions on staff report?
Mr. Evans, on the suddenly parcels 3, 4, 5, and 6, are they accessed only by the internal circulation, or are they used residential streets on the south side?
They would, there's no prohibition of access on the other sides, we would have architectural approval and have the ability to make sure that those access points are appropriately designed. But the intent was to allow people to have access, there's an access easement that comes through the middle of the property, as well as an access easement here, but there was no restrictions placed on it relative to access on those other particular straits.
I think the concern I'm, well, we have a public hearing, we'll express those after the public hearing. Additional questions or comments? This is a public hearing, anyone here to address the council on item 9, the Brown and Weiner Social Security Building, please come forward at this time. Good evening, you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the city council. My name is Vicki Valenswell with Thatcher Engineering and Associates, representing Mr. Gary Brown on the item before you. For the record, we have reviewed the staff report and conditions of approval as prepared by staff, and agreed to them as outlined. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council during this public hearing? Very good, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Council, questions or comments?
I'll just continue on my line of thinking, I'm, I wonder if it's at this time, Mr. Evans, do we need to discuss access off the south side? I'm concerned about penetrating that far into the residential community and having a proximity to the existing school. Is that not south?
Yeah, the school is immediately to the south and the other side of Camino Paracella. Certainly, this is the time, if the council is of the inclination to put access restrictions, this is the time to do it. When we looked at this, we took a look at the issue of how the properties might be designed. We expect that if this building goes forward, that we might get some activity. We didn't see a need to restrict the driveways because it's professional office-type use. Particularly, you know, usually pretty standard, Monday-through-Friday-type traffic, you know, peak in the morning, peak in the afternoon, peak in the evening, with not a lot of intensity of flow. So we didn't see it as an issue, nor did the commission, and nobody from the public, you know, came and testified. But today is the time to add any restrictions, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I guess the concern I have is having vehicular activity near the school and that far into the residential community, when in fact there is an easement at the middle portion of the large section that would allow and avail, obviously, internal circulation and avoiding any conflicts of that sort. I would be in favor of trying to develop a green belt around the property with a better response to the residential neighborhood and allowing for internal circulation only.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I, my feeling is similar. Doug, my question would be, though, isn't this a prime case for perhaps a master plan, since there is one owner on the property? Or at least a specific plan, so every developer that comes in here does his part towards that plan, versus just approving a track map to, I mean, I feel as the mayor does. It's a great piece of property, one of the few that we have left on a major with this type of use. I mean, I think the use makes sense, but you've got essentially a flag lot on that middle lot, although there are access easements there. If the other properties don't develop, I just, I see nothing but problems going there. Now's the opportunity to master plan it, to get it right, to get it taken care of, so when each individual lot comes in and develops, it'll develop towards a common goal. And whether that's access on the south or not, that's, you know, I don't know, I mean, I think it's, the school's pretty well fenced off over there, although I do think that's the bus access. But I do think we need a master plan, or a specific plan, or something, that each participant that builds on this property contributes to that whole product when it's all done, and it appears as a whole, so.
Ergo, a cohesive project.
Yes.
Yeah. Other council questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
I guess my question is, why does it have to be a cohesive project when you're talking about six individual pieces of property, all owned by the same person, but they're six different pieces of property? And why does it have to be a cohesive plan? Why can't it be six individual ones that come aboard whenever they come aboard?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mills?
Dan, I think the, and I understand what you're saying from that standpoint, but the way it's set up, they all have to work together to gain access, which is why there are, on this map even, legal access agreements. The problem that happens is there's no development of those accesses, so you've got one lot that is a flag lot with no access to it at all, except for a driveway, so to it, coming off one of the other blocks. If that develops first, it's gonna be, you know, you're gonna have a great building on a major thoroughfare with a lousy access to it. And it's, I just, I think it, I think it makes a project more sellable, also, for the developer.
And my concern is to make it so that it's a better response to the neighborhood, that you don't have six or seven different entries, driveways, access points, cars, traffic considerations. If you can control it now by doing internal circulation, the burden is then on the developer to make sure that the circulation is correct, serves all seven lots, and is not some cumbersome series of curb cuts and patterns of traffic inside an area where the school's and children play. I mean, I see it as a consideration for safety, and obviously one of aesthetics. And you get a nice, solid green belt, 15, 20, 25 feet of landscaping all around it, which makes a much better response to the residential community. That's what I'm seeking. I don't want to control the architecture at this time.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I'm just wondering, what does that add to the cost of the development?
Well, I can't predict the cost to the development. If they did a narrative plan that basically showed how each parcel would fit into that, it's a design issue, not really a construction issue, per se. If I could just comment, I've looked at paper master plans on this property for a couple of decades, nothing happened. The property owner wasn't willing to actually do anything. We took a risk with Desert Animal Hospital to cede the property, to get a project up, and we had the debate about whether or not we needed a master plan, and we said, we're gonna get a building, or we're gonna have a vacant lot. We've got another developer that's looking at a building, you know, a user-specific building. If the council's so inclined, I know they have a time scheduled to try and to deliver the social security lot and the building, so you might want to ask the applicant about timing there. You know, you could do a couple of things. You could impose condition of approval that prior to the final map, they bring a overall perimeter design program back to the Planning Commission, and an upgrade program so that people know what pieces of the internal access they would have to put in, i.e., it looks more like a built roadway, or onsite parking lot, as opposed, I think, to the concern that it's gonna look like an alley that goes off into the desert. If the council's comfortable with those conditions, you know, I think there's time between now and the final map. Otherwise, I'd suggest a continuance, so we could meet with the applicant, define exactly their timeframes, and then report back in two weeks, and we might be able to bring an outline and set of recommended conditions back to you. Two ways to approach it.
Okay.
I don't have a problem approving it with the conditions of the master plan.
I'm gonna bring it back in the final form later.
I think that's an excellent idea as well.
Okay, entertain a motion to that.
So moved.
So moved.
I'll say.
I'll second.
I've got Ms. Rose Spurgeon making it, and Mr. Mills giving the second. That will approve it based on a master plan, with final details to be brought forward at a future date. And I'll ask for a roll call.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, 5-0, it's deemed unanimous. Item 10 is case number 5.0935, a conditional use permit for the BMX bike racing track. This is a public hearing. Mr. Ready, your staff report, sir.
Mr. Mayor, we are requesting that this be postponed for two weeks to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
We have to open the hearing at least, do you? Are we able to take action on this tonight? Is there something that's pending, something that's lacking?
There are a couple different issues for the reason for the delay. There are more internal staff issues, and we would request that we would open the hearing and then move it to the next meeting.
Going to open and continue it?
And continue it. Thank you.
All right. Well, ask for a brief staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, this is a conditional use permit. The applicant is the Police Activities League for a BMX track at the southeast corner of Vella Road and Mesquite Avenue. Basically, the track would be down in the existing depression, the parking would be above, the access would be off of Vella. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this at their meeting, identified in the staff report, and we do recommend a two-week continuance. That completes our report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to address item number 10, case number 5.0935, the CUP for the BMX bicycle racing track, please come forward at this time. Very good. We got one take, huh? You still writing BMX, Marvin?
Busted my knee. Mayor and council, Marvin Ruse from Monero Smith &amp; Associates, basically here to concur with the staff report and answer any questions that we might, might from the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruse. Anyone else wishing to address the council during this public hearing? Checking, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, no, we'll continue the public hearing until 03:19:03?
I'll move for that continuance.
Motion by Ms. Rose Spurgeon, second by Ms. Hodges, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed? It's 5-0, deemed unanimous. Counsel, there are two cleanup items, and then we can have the rest of the evening for item 11. So let's do item 12, which is a Gene Autry Trail widening issue, and we'll ask Mr. Ready for his staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're requesting that you approve both of these as recommended. These are items for both the Gene Autry Trail Railroad Bridge widening and the widening through the wash. They are engineering and environmental, and Mr. Bracken, our city engineer, is here to give you a detailed report if you need it, however, they are administrative, and we are asking your approval on these, this important capital project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. What's the council's pleasure?
I'll move the minute orders.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Oden, and second by Ms. Rose Spurgeon. Any further questions or comments? Ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, 5-0, it's deemed unanimous. Item 13 is an ordinance for second reading and adoption, first introduced on 2/19/03. I'll ask the council's pleasure for its second reading.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Rose Spurgeon, and second by Mr. Oden. I'll ask that the text be waved and just the title be read.
map by approving a change of zone from R2 and R1AH to CM and 020 for the property located at 4155 East Matthew Drive, Zone R2 and R1AH, Section 30.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It's five oh, it's deemed unanimous. Council, let's turn now back to item eleven. It's case number 50934, PD 281, general planned amendment, zoning map amendment and then planned development district 281. This is a public hearing, and I'll ask Mr. Ready for his staff report.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I will ask the planning director, Mr. Evans, to give the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. You have a two-volume staff report, and I will not do a reading tonight of the entire report. So what I'll try to do is a quick administrative overview of some of the key points and what the planning commission concerns were, show you the exhibits, try to answer any questions that you might have, and then I think we will settle in for a fairly lengthy public hearing. The planning commission did look at two items. One was a general plan amendment to redesignate 2.17 acres of land from professional to medium density residential. That's 12 to 15 units per acre, and that property that's recommended for the general plan amendment used to be zoned residential, was changed, I believe, in 1993. The second item that the planning commission recommended conditional approval of is planned development district in lieu of a change of zone for the construction of eighty-five transitional housing units, a 3,000 square foot family care facility, and this project is located on the southwest corner of Vista Chino and Sunrise Way. The current zoning on the property is predominantly professional. The developer is a host of people relative to the development, and then there's players that are involved in it relative to land ownership, land involvement, different types of development activities, and that's outlined in the report. The planning commission recommendation after almost a four-hour public hearing was that they recommended approval of the project on a three-to-one vote. There were two abstentions and one absent. They approved the project subject to deleting one land use element, that's the poor and homeless daycare facility that was primarily intended to take care of people that needed help with food as well as their daily needs relative to mail and other types of support services. The commission did add a condition that there should be a separate internal smoking area in the residential component. The concern was that they didn't want to have smokers spread out throughout, that one of the commissioners has had some experience with this type of land use and felt that there should be a central area for that type of activity. The project overall, the existing Desert AIDS Project is onsite. They have approximately a 40,000 square foot facility, and again, a new building, the county family care facility, 36,000 square feet, and then eighty-five transitional units. The kind of key issues in the planned development district that the planning commission looked at, planned development district is our most rigorous permit. It allows the mixing of land uses, it allows some adjustment of property development standards or performance standards. But the key issues that the planning commission looked at, they did look at a minor reduction in parking. They felt that, based upon the type of clientele, the lack of single cars, particularly in the housing component, and also a review of the existing parking conditions for Desert AIDS Project, that they felt that there was adequate justification for relief. Staff also agrees with that after watching this type of project in other places in town. We don't believe parking will ever be a problem onsite, and there is some good overlap if there is a problem. The other concern, the applicant asked for relief, they actually asked for additional community protection, is they did ask to build an eight-foot-high wall around the property as opposed to a six-foot-high wall. The planning commission recommended approval of that also. The county family healthcare facility has a building that's thirty-six foot high to the tops of the parapets, little bit taller than by right of zone, but if you take a look at it, it meets or exceeds all of our setbacks, our high-rise setbacks, and when I show you the site plan, it's setback well away from other projects. And a building of that site size and that location, the planning commission felt very comfortable with the mass and scale. The individual components of the project, the family care facility, is intended to be primarily operated by the county. It's very similar to the facility directly across from city hall. It's in an old, the old police station, and basically, they offer a full range of family care facilities and adolescent care facilities and also care for children. They also have some other special programs over there. That facility, I walked through it today, operates as a medical office complex and kind of made me feel like I was young again to walk into a medical office facility with a bunch of young people in it. The, you know, so that facility is intended to really provide healthcare services that are already provided in Palm Springs, or the most part, the services that are gonna be provided at the new facility are the same services except expanded. So I won't go through them in detail, but if you have questions, we certainly can. With regards to the transitional care, or transitional housing, eighty-five total units, forty-eight units would be studio, those would be intended for short-term housing. Those would be people that need fairly quick and immediate relief relative to housing. The intent, that housing would be targeted towards HIV patients and homeless people. They do have to be employed, they do have to sign a contract, and they do have to follow rules and regulations to be in the facility, or they'll be asked to leave. The second component of that housing is a longer-term housing component, and that's thirty-seven one- and two-bedroom units. The intent there is if you've proven that you, one, can pay the rent, two, you can abide by the rules, and you're at a point where you can transition into longer-term housing, that that housing would be available, and the unit sizes are a little bit larger. You've got all of the criteria for signup, registration, rules and regulations, and we certainly can try and answer any questions if you have questions regarding that. Those are the key issues. I could go on for probably another thirty minutes on the staff report, but I won't. I'd like to show you the plans because I think tonight, most everybody in the audience has heard my presentation. The council probably hasn't, but you've had plenty of time to read it. Most everybody here went through this, a longer presentation at the planning commission. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll present the plans. The site plan that the planning commission looked at is this particular site plan. I'm gonna go back and forth only because these are a little bit more graphic and easier to read, but the actual site plan that the planning commission reviewed and recommended approval of is this particular site plan. The applicant took a look at where the homeless drop-in facility is, in this corner, and basically said, a theoretical modification, if they're not gonna build that portion, is they could come in and have an area where they could put some of the county vehicles within an impound yard with a decorative wall around it. But again, the planning commission did not view that exhibit. This is the plan that's really before you, with the condition that this space not be used for the poor and homeless drop-in center. Relative to the project, the residential component is located in this area, and the setbacks to the existing Vista Del Monte Senior Housing Project, sixty-five feet to the property line to the first two-story unit here, forty-five feet on the corner, sixty-eight feet in that location. The county family care facility is located here. Again, this is a thirty-six-foot-high building to the tops of the parapet, and it is 440 feet from the property line with Vista Del Monte and 330 feet setback to the Ranch Club, which is actually down in this area, and you have a professional office building in this location. If you take a look at the housing, which is located here to the Ranch Club and the Colony at El Mirador, which is a neighbor right here on the corner, it's 530 feet away from the existing residential to the south. So the idea was to put the residential up in this area, and the basic mix of housing, the purple shows is two-story, the yellow is single-story, so they're trying to get some height variation on the various product types to basically balance the architecture and the number of units that they need to construct. Taking a look at access to the property, there would be no access except for an emergency access point off of the driveway that services the Vista Del Monte Senior Projects. One driveway on Sunrise Way, that's the existing driveway for Desert AIDS Project. They're gonna eliminate the driveway right up near the corner and basically create a port of cachere drop-off that will work in this area and really be able to focus more on that and not have people come right back out in the intersection. It's a little bit tight. And then there would be a median break at this location that's existing for a driveway, and then on the south property line, another driveway. Eight-foot-high walls around the perimeter, when it gets over near the Ranch Club property, it would probably be a fence as opposed to an eight-foot-high block wall because it's gonna be a professional use next to a professional use as opposed to residential to the parking area. The existing Desert AIDS Project is located in this area, again, the family facility there, the parking, retention basin, and then some covered parking back in this area. The preliminary landscape plan is shown here. It's very conceptual at this point, but the idea is to have a very well landscaped parking area here. One of the conditions is to take a look at possibly securing this back portion of the parking area at night, and without a doubt, securing the retention facilities that are on the south property line that provide a real good setback. Building, massing and concepts, you have photographs of the existing Desert AIDS Project, site cross-sections that basically illustrate the distances that I just outlined, and the planning commission was very comfortable with the massing of buildings and relationships up here, and then again, the large, fairly open parking area that, from the adjoining residential property, you'll primarily see the trees as the trees fell in. Mr. Mayor, that is an overview of the project. There's a lot of details to it. I'll certainly try to answer any questions that you might have.
Council questions of Mr. Evans on his staff report thus far.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
I don't have a question, but I just think that I should for the public record, since I do live relatively close to this particular project. Let the people know that it has been checked out. I believe I'm 629 feet from the project to where my residence is, and therefore, I do not have a conflict of interest, and I will be voting on it.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Evans, I can't read the small print here. I used to be able to read the small print. And those won't help. I wonder if you could do a parking breakdown for me, building per building or use per use? I understand the proposed housing, but if you could tell me what the attributable parking spaces is to the current Desert AIDS Project building, and then what the ones are to the new building to the south.
I'll have to do a little bit of searching, so if you hold on, I'll look that up. If there's another question, I'll keep looking.
That was the only one I had.
Okay. It's probably the one that we didn't specifically break out in the staff report.
It's hard to believe in three inches of paper that the information's out there.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I may have to look that up in the application, portion of the application.
I can certainly wait for the information.
Yeah, we'll get you the information before tomorrow morning.
Based on this stack of cards they're hearing, it'll still be going on tomorrow morning.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
This, the buffer that's here next to the buildings, how wide is that buffer?
Landscape buffer?
Yes, landscape buffer.
On the south?
Yes.
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five. And where it says existing wall, it looks like it says six feet, those will be raised to eight feet?
The intent was to have the six-foot or an eight-foot-high wall around it so that there would be firm security, and in some cases, we'd have to build a wall next to a wall. You can't add on to it.
So it'll be two, okay.
Carrie? Other questions before we open the public hearing?
Well, that's it.
All right, well, here's how it works, ladies and gentlemen. We offer each of you five minutes, and many of you have requested that five minutes, and we have two audiences, one here and one in the large conference room. So I'm going to call off five names, and that should give people ample time from the large conference room to come join us here in the chamber and give testimony. If in fact you're in the large conference room and can't get here, we'll find a way to make sure you get your second chance to come around. We're gonna make sure everyone on here that's got a card in here gets a chance. Now, many of you may in fact by the end of this go home at the tail end of you here, because these are five minutes each, and I've probably got thirty, thirty-five cards. So we'll be here for a while. And we'll stay as long as you can, I guess, huh? So I'll call the first five, if you'll come down at this time, please. Mr. John Brown, Mr. Rule Young, Andrew Barker, Marvin Ruse, and Bob Morris. If you'll come down and form a line right next to where Mr. Brown is right now, that can help move things along. As one is finished, we'll call another one forward. Again, Mr. Rule Young, Andrew Barker, Marvin Ruse, and Bob Morris. Good evening. If you'll give your name to the city clerk, there's a clock in front of myself and in front of Ms. Hodges. It counts down from five minutes, and welcome.
Good evening. I'm John Brown. I'm the executive director of the Desert AIDS Project, and I'm very proud to be presenting on behalf of the Vista Sunrise Human Services Campus. The city staff has done a very good job of presenting a sort of an overview of the project. I do want to talk for just a little bit about the various funding sources that are going to be involved in this project because they are new sources of money for the City of Palm Springs. The housing itself is going to be tax credit, special needs housing, that's where we're applying for the funding for the housing, and the target population is going to be people who are homeless and people living with AIDS and HIV. This is where Desert AIDS Project's primary motivation for being a partner in this program has come from. Our clients, we have about forty percent of our clients who come to us with housing needs, and right now, we don't have the resources. Of all the services we provide, the only service that has an actual waiting list is housing. And it was out of that need that we got involved with the other partners in this development, including Episcopal Community Services, Catholic Charities, the Desert Healthcare District, Riverside County Department of Health Services, and your own homeless task force. And it's been two years of very gratifying work, bringing us to this well-thought-out, well-planned project. I would also like to say that we intentionally tonight felt that those that are speaking on behalf of the project felt, in the interest of time, that we would limit the number of people we have speaking tonight. So we did want to take just a second to have everybody that is supporting the Vista Sunrise Project stand up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to also take this opportunity to thank the City of Palm Springs and this council for the leadership that you have shown over the years in assisting Desert AIDS Project and developing into what it is, which is a model for aid services for the entire country. Everywhere I go in this nation, people talk about Desert AIDS Project, how comprehensive it is, and they also talk about how well-thought-of it is in the community. I want to also take this opportunity to thank the city of Palm Springs and this council for the leadership that you have shown over the years in assisting Desert AIDS Project in developing into what it is, which is a model for AIDS services for the entire country. Everywhere I go in this nation, people talk about Desert AIDS Project, how comprehensive it is, and they also talk about how well-thought-of it is in the community and how supported it is by the community. And that didn't happen by accident. That happened because you as the leaders in the community took the position that you would support programs for people in need. In other parts of the country, people living with AIDS and HIV are still feared and misunderstood. We're very proud of the fact that that isn't the case here in our city and that is because you have proven that when you support the development of responsible, professionally-run services for people in need, everybody wins. And that's exactly what Vista Sunrise Project is all about. In closing, I would just like to recognize that I think, that I know everyone here wants what's best for Palm Springs and everybody wants Palm Springs to be a great place to live. Where the differences are is how you measure that greatness. Those in support of Vista Sunrise feel that the greatness of a community isn't measured by the quality of life that's enjoyed by the most affluent and the most capable. It's not measured by the quality of life enjoyed by the average members of that community. The greatness of a community is measured by the quality of life enjoyed by those who are least capable and the poorest. Vista Sunrise is all about making sure that that quality is high for generations to come and that Palm Springs remains a great place to live. Thank you very much.
Young followed by Andrew Barker, Marvin Rouse, Bob Morris, and Linda Barak. Mr. Young.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm the president of Interactive Design Corporation, an architectural firm in Palm Springs. Approximately 30% of our work is for nonprofit, special needs housing developers. This project is remarkable in my experience for a number of reasons. It stems from a vision of comprehensive care, recognizing that in addressing the needs of a clientele, the efficient use of resources compels the organization of a site and the disparate parties who provide services into a central place. Just as City Hall has its departments and it's a one-stop-shop, Vista Sunrise represents an integrated approach to providing services for a specific but broad clientele. It's remarkable because of the vision of incorporating housing needs with county-provided health care, with private-provided counseling, HIV/AIDS counseling, nutritional services, well-infant care services, maternal, child, and adolescent care, and other focused, health-related services that are already being provided here across the street. This project is also remarkable by happenstance. It's at an intersection that has a crossing of two bus lines. The clientele is dependent upon public resources to provide for transportation, counseling, and housing. It is also remarkable because of the cooperative and collaborative effort of private and public agencies that have made this possible. The components of this project have been presented by Mr. Evans. Candidly, I said to Andrew from my office, he did our job. He told the story. I want to keep my comments short, but I do want to reiterate a few things. I have a laser pointer. Does it help if I point specifically at it?
Depends where you point it, sir.
Yeah, only there. It's over here. And I actually instructed, I have two eight-year-old boys, they saw this, I said, "Okay, I want you to see what this is because you never look in it." And it was, my wife said, "Don't show it." So, don't look in this and I won't point it. The components are housing, the family health care facility by county, and 6,000 square feet of related nonprofit service provider offices, the Desert AIDS Project. This is here, permanent, we're not going to move it. The question is, where's the front door? Because of the median cut here, the front door, we felt, was a long sunrise. Could, this is a right-in, right, whoops, right-in, right-out only? This has cross-access. This became the entrance and in response to commentary from council members and the planning commission, the area between here was changed, the layout of this parking and drive was changed. In response to the planning department, the location of housing which started here was moved up here. In response to criticism about the layout of the parking, we realigned the parking, which is, all of these are better, it's a better project because of these. So, access to the building is easier along this access. Now, council member, Rel. Spurgeon, I'm going to aim it closer here, so just, the organization of the site by landscape is a diagonal which collects people from this end, which is primarily going to be the staff, and directs them to the heart of this family care facility. There's an atrium in the middle that slices all the way through the building and if you come from here or here, you can walk through the building on the ground floor like this. Also, we have an access shaded by trellis, arbor, and trees connecting this building from this, with this building. And lastly, we have access into the housing component, which is arrayed around a curved walkway so that the sense of community, and I'm going to steal a little bit of Andrew's talk, I have 32 seconds, so it'll vary a little bit. There's a gradient of security that for these clientele is the most important thing. They are reintegrating their life, they are learning to socialize, and so the transition from public to private, from one's security within the unit to the porch, to the shared walkway, to the shared street, and to the public street, is a grave and important transition that the entire campus is focused on, how to reintegrate people into society. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Andrew Barker, Marvin Rouse, Bob Morris, Linda Barak, and George... Patrifat, thank you.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Andrew Barker, I'm a staff architect with Interactive Design and was actively participating in the design and development of this project. Since Doug did a wonderful job, Mr. Young did a wonderful job, there's not too much more I can say, but I'll emphasize on the housing portion of the project. The housing portion is one and two stories. As been mentioned before, 47 of the units or 48 of the units are transitional housing and the remainder of the 37 are a little longer-term housing for people with special needs. The architecture of the housing itself takes its emphasis from the existing buildings on both sides of the project itself, the existing Desert AIDS Project and the existing senior housing to the west. The forms will be very same and very much the same and similar and sort of reflects the Palm Springs modern. It'll have basically flat roofs and hopefully using materials and things that'll be very comfortable and integrating into the campus as a whole. We talked about fencing around the project and the housing itself. The housing portion of the project will have its own perimeter fencing within the other portions of the campus. Along Vista Chino, it may be decorative wrought-iron fencing and then along the west and the south, it would be your block wall that sort of matches the existing. As Mr. Young mentioned, the interior of the housing portion is landscape, there'll be open areas for children to play, places for people to gather. There'll be a community building which will have office space for counseling as needed. There would be a recreation room and a small swimming pool within the facility for the tenants and things like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rouse?
I won't take his two minutes extra. Marvin Rouse with the Nero Smith &amp; Associates were project planners and engineers for the Vista Sunrise Project. Basically, you're in support of the staff report, the planning commission work, had a couple of areas that I wanted to just talk to briefly, the environmental work that we did. The comments came up from staff in terms of investigation of traffic, investigation of security as a primary issue, some hydrology. However, this is an area that the master plan of storm drains has been put in, so basically all of the tributary flows hydraulically are coming down and being intercepted on Vista Chino. So, we're going to do a little site retention and the like. So, engineering-wise, this is a fairly simple solution. Traffic-wise, the change in general plan from professional to residential actually will reduce traffic potentially from what would be there if this was developed, both with housing on the little panhandle piece that's on the far west side as well as the, and then pushing the residential into the, what's now the professional, actually would probably take out 20,000 square feet of office building, which depending on uses, could be considerably higher in traffic generation. Both Vista Chino and Sunrise in the intersection are working at capacities as acceptable limits within the city's general plan. Think that one of the major benefits kind of infrastructurally is getting the rights of way and the curbs moved back at Vista Chino and Sunrise for the old Palm Springs Medical Center, for those who've been here for as long as I have, that was put in in probably the mid-'60s, early-'60s. In fact, I think that's where I met Jeannie at the first time. And so, we're getting that pulled back, plus we're getting that funky driveway fixed, which is now really difficult to integrate traffic right at the intersection. So, all of that's being worked out. And in addition, on this, the major professional piece, whereas if this was held as separate ownership, we might have separate access points, we're being able to basically keep just the access points that are there and integrate this in a campus-like setting. And I give Rule a lot of credit, Rule and his team a lot of credit for that integrated campus plan. You know, there weren't really a lot of other issues and questions about, do we want to move residential uses a little bit closer to the airport, but we really have other residential uses much closer to the airport. This fits the, within the framework of noise, both from, actually, the noise is greatest from the Highway 111, which is Vista Chino now, much more so than the airport. So, Title 24 and other issues came about. I would point out that there's a number of conditions, basically four major conditions in the staff report that deal with the security plan. If in fact the homeless daycare center is taken out of the project, we feel that, I mean, that was the discussions that we had with the police department and others, planning staff, et cetera, on why we need a security measure. We could leave in the eight-foot walls, but things like developing a security plan, a review after one year of the project, we think that those really were aimed at the issue of whether or not we could, you know, get the homeless away from the project after the project was closed down in the four o'clock in the afternoon, et cetera. So, items 3M-P, 3M through P on 11D7, item 32 on 11D10, 33 on 11D11, and the police department number two on 11D11 were those conditions and I could, you know, hand those to staff. We feel that if that part is taken out, that that was really the major function that was being looked at relative to the security plan per se and would probably not be really necessary with offices. For the most part, all of these uses are right-of-zone uses. Really, the planned development district was primarily an issue around some of the development standards coming in with the parking study that we did. And if the homeless daycare center goes away actually and that 3,000 square foot is taken out of the project, we're actually, I think, only five spaces under the parking requirement. Anyway, if there's any questions on that, certainly be glad to try to answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. Mr. Bob Morris, Linda Barak, George Putrifat, Linda Kearney, and Candy De Lima. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the city council and residents here this evening who are concerned about this project, my name is Bob Morris. I'm a vice president with Episcopal Community Services of San Diego and we are part of the management team of this project. ECS of San Diego was founded 75 years ago on the belief that all people were created by God with a birthright to dignity. And for 75 years, we've been helping the people we serve achieve that dignity in their lives. Today, ECS has over 450 employees, an annual budget of about $22 million, and we serve about 3,500 people each day in San Diego County. Here in the Coachella Valley, we have five residential facilities that are transitional housing for people who are homeless because of AIDS. We've been operating here for the past five years. We believe in the communities that we serve and the neighborhoods where our houses are located are improved because we are there. Because part of providing our clients with an opportunity to regain the dignity in their lives, we believe we must make the neighborhood a better place. We're looking forward to participating in this project and we would be welcome and open to any of your questions. ECS has, does work like this in, all through the county of San Diego and for various government entities. We currently contract with the federal government, the state government, the county of San Diego, the city of San Diego, as well as the county of Riverside here in your own area. We believe that we can improve the quality of life for the people that we serve and that we can do it in a transitional setting that will help people return to the mainstream of life. We offer supportive services in a blend of housing and also employment. And we think we can make a real difference here and we're very excited to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Linda Barak, George Putrifat, Linda Kearney, and Candy De Lima, followed by Harold Matzner.
My name is Linda Barak, I'm with Episcopal Community Services and I'd like to address the transitional housing component and the programs that it contains. There is a great need for homeless services and affordable housing in the Palm Springs area, which is overwhelming. Transitional housing has the highest success rate of homeless people securing and remaining in permanent housing than any other solution to date. In Episcopal Community Services local program, clients may remain for up to 24 months, which is traditional with transitional housing. During the year 2001, 2002, clients increased their income by 97%. 90% of clients exiting transitional housing secured permanent housing. The HUD requirement at this time is 50%. The national average of those exiting from a shelter and securing permanent housing is 43%, so there's a big difference there. Our clients' health, 99% of our clients' health improved once they were placed into housing. Client skills as far as living and managing funds increased 98%. Clients are identified and assessed at the time that they enter the program. Survival issues are addressed first, which are housing, food, and medical needs. After these needs are met and clients meet with their case managers and set goals and a course of action to meet the ultimate goal, which is securing and keeping permanent housing. The following services are needed for many to reach this outcome. Employment assistance, retraining, education, living skills, assistance in applying for benefits such as social security. The case manager interacts with clients every day when possible. All case managers carry a pager and are on-call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and respond to any and all emergencies. I've been doing this for four years, I'm tired. Clients are given training and resources which are available within the community as well as budgeting, planning, which is updated every 90 days. Nutritional information is also given to the clients through an ongoing instruction format. Clients are placed on waiting lists for affordable housing, which fits into their budget, allowing the client to be successful in finding and keeping long-term housing. Clients are also placed on Section 8 waiting lists for housing vouchers within the valley. Many clients do not have a permanent address before entering transitional housing. Without an address, clients cannot access many of the services that would be available to them. This changes for the client upon entering transitional housing and AIDS in their long-term success. Case managers monitor clients who exit case manager, or exit transitional housing and into permanent housing for a number of months. This follow-up allows for the clients to develop a support system within society and increases their continuing success. increases their continuing success. Once again, without the services included in transitional housing, the national success rate for people overcoming homelessness is 43 percent, while the success rate of transitional housing is 90 percent. It is the mission of Episcopal Community Services to bring dignity and hope to our clients and to serve the local community in a significant way. Thank you.
Thank you. George Putterfat, Linda Kearney, Candy De Lima, Harold Matzner, and Nancy Williamson. Good evening, George.
My name is George Puttyfat. I'm a resident of Palm Springs. I am the HIV Housing Coordinator for Riverside County. I am a member of the Palm Springs Homeless Task Force, the Palm Springs Housing Strategy Committee, and the Director of Social Services at Desert AIDS Project. And I am here to ask your support and advocate for housing for people with HIV. If I may just briefly read the executive summary of a housing needs assessment that was done for Riverside County recently. Quote, "Finding and keeping a safe and affordable place to live is a constant challenge for many people with HIV disease throughout Riverside and San Bernardino. From the urban cities of Riverside and San Bernardino throughout the Coachella Valley and over the mountains and towns and rural stretches of the high desert, individuals and families affected by HIV and AIDS are struggling to meet the most basic human need: a place to live." Today at Desert AIDS Project, we had 23 new people that came to our new client orientation. Five of those people were homeless. In consulting with all of our collaborations throughout the valley for places for these folks to live, every single facility was full. Affordable housing is at crisis proportions. People with HIV are not only challenged by a compromised immune system, but also by compromised economics, compromised mobility, and compromised willingness by landlords to rent to them. So we are here to advocate on behalf of the housing component of this. We feel the overall project is certainly worthwhile, and we strongly urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda Kearney, Candy De Lima, Harold Matzner, Nancy Williamson, and Edward Dietrich.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I am here on behalf of County Supervisor Roy Wilson to express his support of this project. He believes that it will be an asset to the community and will not at all be a detriment. It is something that is needed in this community, and his full support is behind the project as presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Candy De Lima, followed by Harold Matzner, Nancy Williamson, Edward Dietrich, and M. David Chavaria. Good evening, Candy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, city staff. Again, my name is Candy De Lima, and I am here representing Assemblywoman Bonnie Garcia. She sends her regrets. She's in Sacramento, tending to legislative duties. However, she did want me to be here on her behalf to reiterate her support for this project and to read the letter that she wrote in support dated February 5th. Honorable members of the Palm Springs City Council, I would like to extend my support of the proposed Vista Sunrise Health and Human Services Campus. This program for the indigent and homeless in the western Coachella Valley is sorely needed and long overdue. Your approval of the proposed campus will provide the homeless a level of dignity and a real opportunity to access critical services they currently lack. Many things we take for granted, such as a hot shower, laundry facilities, meals, and a place to receive mail, will be offered and will help clients to rise above poverty and homelessness. Vista Sunrise Health and Human Services Campus is on the right track to success because it will be a comprehensive center built in collaboration with many committed partners of the local public and private sector. I am pleased to extend my support and sincerely hope this project is given the consideration it deserves. Please do not hesitate to contact my office if I may provide any further information. Sincerely, Bonnie Garcia, Assemblywoman, 80th District. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Harold Matzner, Nancy Williamson, Edward Dietrich, M. David Chavaria.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council and staff. I'm here to support the Sunrise Vista Project in general. Specifically, I would like to express my strong support for the housing component. Fortunately, the battle against AIDS has progressed to the point where the rolls of Desert AIDS Project, the patients, has increased significantly because the lifetime of people affected with AIDS as a result of medical improvements and the services of this remarkable facility that we have in our community, the Desert AIDS Project, has lengthened the life expectation to almost normalcy as long as a difficult regimen of treatment is followed. My friend Earl Greenberg has put a great deal of his financial resources into the development of similar housing in the Santa Monica market and in other places in and around Los Angeles County. I have visited the Santa Monica Project, which is in an area of, that is almost entirely residential, as opposed to the area in which this project is being located, which is kind of mixed. It has had certainly no negative impact whatsoever on the housing surrounding it. It does provide HIV victims and AIDS victims with housing, which is very, very difficult to provide, to find, and which gives them, which gives them the encouragement and hope that they deserve in a dignified environment, and that, and gives them the kind of positive energy support that does extend, I believe, extend their lives. I think that victims of this terrible disease need the kind of positive encouragement that lifts the soul and helps them to reach out in the fight for their own survival. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Nancy Williamson, Ed Dietrich, David Chavaria, Jim Griffies, and Jackie Tungin. Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I would like to read a letter from our onsite Realtor. I live at Sunrise Racket Club. To whom it may concern, as the onsite representative for resales and rentals at Sunrise Racket Club, I would like to address the issue of the new homeless center to be constructed across the street. There are many private residential communities surrounding this proposed center and not the appropriate area to build this type of facility. When the owners sell their homes, they will need to disclose this center being across the street, and this will affect the value of their properties. A better location for this center would be in an industrial section where there are no private residential homes, and there are many of those areas in Palm Springs. I strongly urge you to vote no on this facility and this location. Kindest regards, Mary Ellen Hill, Mary Ellen Hill and Associates Realty. I might add that two of our newer homeowners have remarked that they would not have purchased their homes had they known of this proposed project. Is this not an indication of what we can expect in the future if the facility is approved? I applaud the efforts of the Homeless Task Force to recognize and pursue comprehensive services for this population. However, to put this in an established neighborhood with schools and a church just doesn't make common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed Dietrich, David Chavaria, Jim Griffies, Jackie Tungin, and Robert Samuelson, please. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, old friends. We are, we've worked together a long time. As you know, I'm president, currently president of Sagewood Homeowners Association. I am representing the Sunrise Vista Chino Neighborhood Coalition, a group of homeowners and board members from the various associations in our neighborhood that have been meeting for the last seven, eight weeks. We are Palm Springs homeowners, residents, young and old, who've come together to study and to analyze the application for the Vista Sunrise Project. We sought help from several law firms, a political research analyst, real estate experts, and others, as we tried to understand the scope and the breadth of this project. I say that because I want you to know that we didn't take this on lightly, that we didn't take it on scurrilously or in attempt to create anger or upset or fear in the neighborhood. In fact, we did just the opposite. And for that, I quote from Bob Hoven in a recent editorial in Megacene. "Now is the time for common sense and pragmatic discussion and debate, not emotional outbursts." The proposed facility raises some serious questions regarding its potential effect on our town. We, as a coalition, from our starting point, have tried to address our concerns, not only from the view of perspective as homeowners, but also as members of the city of Palm Springs. We are concerned about the following issues. You already have seven pages of documentation that I've authored or have helped author that you've got in your file, so I won't repeat all the detail, but the key points. We are very concerned with the lack of an adequate environmental impact report. Insufficient community input. Even though there were lots of community meetings, by and large, most of the people did not understand the impact of this until after those things were over. And when we tried to suggest that that would be useful, it didn't meet with high approval. Serious concerns about public safety. Schools, as you know, and certainly the, well, one of the school board members will address that, but some serious crime in that area. Seniors, persons with AIDS, and we believe a dangerous mix of multiple high-risk populations is an explosive combination. Traffic and parking, you've already heard about. We are concerned about the reduction because we do not believe that that is appropriate. Incompatible land usage and inconsistent neighborhood planning, given the variety of types of homes and what's happened to the value of homes in that neighborhood. The El Mirador Project, for example, built as $400,000 homes, now selling at 800, 900,000. Just concerns. I've spoken with a real estate agent yesterday who is selling several buildings, apartment complexes over on Chuckwalla, and he's got three buyers, one being himself, and two other buyers, but they're waiting on your decision tonight before they make a decision, so. Liability issues. We think there's incredible liability issues here just because of the complex of the mix, both for the city as well as the Desert AIDS Project. Insurance concerns. With the vulnerability in the insurance market in this state, as you know, homeowners' insurance companies have been dropping like flies in this state. It's a little bit of my industry, and we are very concerned that there will not be, either the rates will climb significantly or will not be available. Lack of assurances, the programs may be, just because they're defined as what they are today, may be something else tomorrow. Although it's been said multiple times that HUD does not have influence in the living center, they will because they, still, their rulebook still deals with, even with those that have tax credits. At least our research people tell us that. The county building, we also are concerned about that because once the lease is signed, the county can decide to put in there what they want. If A doesn't work, then maybe it's time to move in some probation offices, or maybe it's time to do outpatient mental health, which we would find seriously a major risk in that area, given that the county deals with those who are most vulnerable and very sick, who are a risk to themselves and a risk to other people. False community expectations. We believe the downtown business association has an expectation that the homelessness will go away from downtown. That will not be a fact. Just look to Santa Monica. A confusing police report on the current feeding site in the report that you have before you, the application. A preponderance of low-income housing. Am I over? I'm over.
Glad you to come to close. Yes, sir. David Chavaria, Jim Griffies, Jackie Tungin, Robert Samuelson, and Bridget Zawida.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is my second time here, so I want to go back and...
If you could give your name to the city clerk, please. Give your name.
David Chavaria, C-H-A-V-A-R-I-A.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to read you two letters. The first one I did was back in February of this year, and then, of course, tonight. "To the mayor, city council members, and members of the planning commission, and the Palm Springs citizens, I am here to address proposal, the proposed planning and development of the Crossroads Homeless Daycare Center and Housing Project. As a new resident to Palm Springs and for the first time a homeowner residing in a non-gated community in Sagewood located east and across the street from the Desert AIDS Project, I regret that I am not in favor of this project. As a native and former resident of San Diego, which is considered to be one of the largest progressive cosmopolitan cities in the U.S., I have seen and heard a negative impact of a development such as the one being considered. I have also experienced firsthand living next door to a project such as what you are proposing. I am sorry to inform you that it doesn't work in the long run, and I will tell you why. Though at first it all looks well and running smoothly, eventually, all that was intended for this project will be neglected and soon forgotten. I just don't mean the appearance of the facility, but for the people who live in these dwellings and for the many that will come from all over the valley and beyond for its free services. Please don't misunderstand me. I'm a very sensitive man and have compassion for the disabled, the survivors of physical abuse, the homeless, teenage parents, and more so for the unguarded and misguided children. But my compassion does have a stopping point. I don't have empathy for people who don't want to help themselves get onto a better road to living. These type of facilities also harbor people with strong bonds to alcohol and drug addictions or severe mental illnesses. In my experiences living amongst these people, they have no inclination of seeking help but to go on living as such. When these souls cannot get any help or get turned away because a shelter is full, they are returned straight off to the neighborhoods, and that's when the aggravation and eventually trouble starts to disrupt its surrounding citizens. As I said before, I just recently purchased my first home in a most beautiful, non-gated community. One of its selling points was that I didn't feel like a prisoner in my own home. My neighbors and I have become a team in keeping Sagewood free of crime and showing other communities that walls and gates aren't always needed. You promised me that our community will remain safe and not be affected by this human service campus project. No, you can't, and you're thinking that crime can strike my community at any time, and you're right. But do I need to worry now about the homeless on top of what else is going on? Today, I am here once again to address my concerns with the proposed planning and development of the Crossroads Homeless Daycare Center and Housing Project. My understanding at this time is that the city of Palm Springs Planning Commission approved the change in the city's master plan and the zoning change requested by the developers of Vista Sunrise by excluding the homeless shelter, but I still feel there are many loose ends that need to be resolved. Public safety is a major concern, and once again, I'm bringing the issue of the surrounding communities, as well as the elementary and junior high school students that would be faced with the annoyance and aggravation of the homeless and the business that will be affected, which would be faced with the interference of their customers due to panhandling in front of their stores. Traffic at this intersection is not an appropriate location for this project. In its current state, congestion is heavy and dangerous. This project will be housing vulnerable and dysfunctional individuals, mothers with children which in turn will be using public transportation, crossing streets. Liability issues are a great concern. Desert AIDS projects, as landlord, would be facing extraordinary liability issues, but what also concerns me the most is my liability since I live in a non-gated community. What would I and my neighbors be facing if someone for one reason or another wants to press charges? In my last statement to you, I expressed that one of the reasons I purchased my first home here in the desert. Thank you.
Followed by Jim Griffies, Robert Samuelson, Bridget Zawida, and John Aguilar, please. Good evening, Jackie.
Jackie Tungin.
Jackie Chitungin, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Actually, I'm kind of confused here. I have listened to the project report, and there was no mention of felons or mentally ill or rapists or people like that. I just heard about children in a medical center, and I'm just very confused. If that's what we're looking at, you know, children in a medical center would be fine. HIV patients would be fine, but that isn't what I read on the report. The report said there would be felons, there would be rapists, pedophiles. Are these the people that we want in Palm Springs? Is this what we're looking for, to progress and to, you know, and to, I mean, look down desert. We have the Bob Hope classic, we have Pacific Life open, we have all these beautiful things that are down desert. Thank God we have the Film Festival to bring people into our town, but now, what is this going to do? Is this going to bring in more people, conventioners? Are they going to want to come here because we have a homeless center? I don't think so. I just don't understand. They're not going to have any security at this place, and, you know, what are they supposed to do, these children, after four o'clock? I mean, if this thing passes, you know, I'm going to be out there with the names and addresses of all these people that promoted this and let all these people go to their homes because I surely don't want them at mine. I just am very confused about this whole thing because I'm getting a two-direction kind of thing here, and I think that you're being told in the wrong direction. So I really think you should consider putting this project in a different position and a different location. Thank you.
Your Honor and members of the city council, my name is Robert Samuelian. I'm a Palm Springs resident, and I'm a property owner and resident of the colony of El Mirador, which abuts this project. I agree with the noble goals of the entire project. However, I disagree strongly with the location. It's totally inappropriate, and if indeed it's desirable to keep the entire project together as a goal, I suggest the entire project be moved somewhere else to where industrial areas have been suggested, but not next to residential area and the schools and the churches. If this involves moving the Desert AIDS Project as well, then so be it, if that's what's needed. But to put a project of this sort in that location, I'm just completely opposed to it, and I'm so strongly opposed that I will fight back with whatever means I have at my disposal. And those means are my pocketbook, and for that, I mean, I will no longer contribute to any charity that supports this. And also, I can fight back with my vote. I have voted for each and every one of you sitting up there. If you pass this project, I will vote for none of you again.
They liked that vote part, didn't they? They liked that. Jim Griffis, followed by Bridget Zawida, John Aguilar, Jack Gentry, and we'll go from there. Jim?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, Jim Griffiths, pastor of Palm Springs Presbyterian Church, but more important, I live at 1283 Del Mar Way, which is just two blocks from the proposed site. It's a beautiful neighborhood of children and youth, single-family dwellings, seasoned citizens there, all kinds, all mixed there. I've been a resident of this community for about eight years now, working at the church. My wife has been a resident of this community for 45 years. We have deep roots in this community. Our children have graduated from Palm Springs High School. Our granddaughter goes to the middle school right in that area. Our great-grandson goes to the Sunshine Preschool right in that area. I understand. I understand, and I'm sensitive to why people in that area and throughout our community might be concerned about having a center for the homeless in that area. I understand completely because I deal with the homeless through our ministry at all times. But I also understand that this location is, as had been said, is going to be a remarkable place. It's going to be different. It's going to be one of the most secure places, not only for the homeless, but for those of us in the community. Right now, the homeless are roaming around. There, they will receive guidance, they will receive supervision, they will receive discipline, they will receive skills. It's a marvelous solution for a problem that we now have. We have the best police and fire services in this state, I do believe. I know this from my own personal experience as chaplain for the Fire Department and Police Department. I'm called out all day, all hours of the day and night to serve in this community, and I see these police and I see these fire people doing a marvelous job. You've got the very best here, and they'll be there, and I'll be there, and there are many of us that will be there because we care about this community, and we know this will be a marvelous solution there. We're not afraid at all. This is going to be a very secure area, not only in our neighborhood, but throughout the community. I hold a letter here that was sent to the mayor and the city council back in November from the West Valley Interfaith Association, and this is made up of leaders from all different denominations, Protestant, Roman Catholic, our Jewish communities, and I have 21 signatures of the faith leaders here on this letter, including my own, in support of Vista Sunrise. We think it's going to be a marvelous solution, and I certainly recommend it to you as a neighbor of where that will be in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bridget Zawida, John Aguilar, Jack Gentry, and Lareda Johnson-Dillingham, please.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Bridget Zawida, and I spoke at the planning commission meeting, and my speech at that point had to do with the daycare center, which I'm vehemently opposed to at the Vista Chino Sunrise Project. My proposal for the daycare center, which was an adult daycare center for homeless people, is turn it into a daycare center for children who may be disadvantaged and need support. Also, if the city council chooses to approve and go forth with the project minus the daycare center, of course, some safeguards should be built in to the project, and I think I listened earlier about that the reviews should be dropped, and I say the reviews should stay intact on the project with the security measures. As well, I spoke before and said that north end of town is the gateway to the city, and I think the north end of town needs to be further revitalized and not demoralized. And I think the city should choose the project with its parameters, the way it has been set up, and make sure that all of us are protected and that the children are protected and that the seniors are protected. And I'm sure there will be many behind me who will speak more in detail on the things that I brought up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Aguilar, Jack Gentry, Lareda Johnson-Dillingham, followed by Patricia Myers, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. I'm going to make just a brief statement. I've just handed copies of our letter to --
Ms. Dragula, aren't you?
Yes.
Yes.
My name is John Aguilar. I'm the director of development for the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. Our corporate office is based on Monroe Street in Indio. I'm here tonight on behalf of the coalition to speak in favor of the Vista Sunrise Project, but also to clarify and dispel an issue of what we feel to be portrayed, excessive police calls at our development at Coyote Run. First, as a reminder to those of you who may not know who we are, CVHC is a nonprofit housing development corporation dedicated to helping low-income families improve their living conditions. We have constructed more than 2,000 homes and apartments for low-income families and persons with particular special housing needs, including farmworkers, those persons living with HIV/AIDS, seniors, and mentally disabled throughout Riverside County. In a letter dated February 27th addressed to the council, opponents of the Vista Sunrise Project suggested to the council that there were in excess of some 250 police calls at our development at the north end of Coyote Run. That concerned us. It seemed excessive. It didn't seem right. We've caucused with the police department, and I think you'll get independent verification of this later in the evening, but staff of the police department have confirmed that a significant number of those calls were caused not associated with problems at the development, but by our residents calling in for problems that occurred on the street on North Sunrise. Our building on Sunrise is the only building with an address north of San Befell, so any activity in a public right-of-way from there north is associated with our development, so we feel that this is a misrepresentation of the criminal activity there. And I want to leave you with encouragement to vote in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jack Gentry, Lareda Johnson-Dillingham, Patricia Myers, Bob Brown, and Richard Campbell, please. Good evening, Mr. Gentry.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Jack Gentry. My wife and I own a condo in Sunrise Racket Club across Sunrise and down about a block from this project. We've been there about 19 years, I think. Live there year-round. Now, I came here tonight to appeal to you to not reverse and override the decision of the planning commission, particularly with respect to the drop-in center. And my reason is very simple. There is a fatal flaw in this plan regarding the drop-in center, and that is that they are not providing for shelter for these people. No place to sleep at night. And here we are, we're trying to attract all these people to come here and are going to dump them right in our pleasant neighborhood with no place to go at night. And I called the lady over to the project who I won't name, but we talked about this at length. She says that what they will do, they will tell the people, "You've got to leave here at four o'clock, and not only that, but you've got to leave the neighborhood tonight. You can't stay in this neighborhood tonight." Now, that makes no sense to anybody, does it? Where are they going to go? There's no place to sleep. There's no place to, drive around, look, where are they going to sleep that night? And we don't know how many we're talking about, maybe 200, for God's sakes, if it's a big success. Where are they going to go? Well, I'll tell you where we think they may go, and that is to the scores of patios that we have here in this area. Beautiful patios, well furnished, even an umbrella if it rains. Now, don't you think those people are going to get wise to that? Many of those places, the owners don't live here, they live somewhere, they come for the major holidays. So have a field day, there's nobody there. Up beautiful furniture and privacy, walls, hedges. Shoot, you can go to the bathroom right there. Nobody will see you, okay? That's what we are afraid of in this area. And my conviction is this, if Palm Springs intends to help the homeless, the first thing they should do is provide shelter for those people, shelter at night. And if we're going to really help them, it's got to be somewhere where they can clean up in the morning, and they can dress appropriately, and they can go out and look for a job, at least, and possibly be hired because they look like they can be hired. That's helping the homeless. But simply to entice them to come for all the comforts that we can give them and then say, "Get out of our sight at four o'clock," and dump them on our neighborhood, is absolutely a hoax. It's a cruel hoax on those people. You're not solving the problem, you're making it worse. Thank you very much.
Lareda Johnson-Dillingham, Patricia Myers, Bob Brown, Richard Campbell, and Ruth Martin, please.
My name is Lareda Johnson-Dillingham, and I live at Ranch Club, which is right adjacent to this proposed complex. I'm going to tell you a story that I've never shared with anyone before. My brother Willard was a victim of a senseless murder in Seattle, Washington. I tell you this because my brother was also homeless, who suffered from mental illness and alcoholism. So you see, I, of all people, understand the need for this types of service, the types of service that this project would provide. However, I'm also a homeowner. I purchased my condo, looking forward to my retirement, in a neighborhood which I chose because it had just the right mix. It has residences, convenient businesses like grocery stores and pharmacies. I did not purchase my condo to be next door to this proposed complex. I don't intend to reiterate all of the reasons that a number of other people will bring up. I just ask that you think this through clearly and bring this project to fruition, but in a location that is better suited to it. I, unlike the minister who said he was two blocks away, I'm probably about 35 feet away. Now, think about your property line, most, and maybe they aren't anymore, but they used to be 50 by 100. A property line is 50, 35 feet is even less. I just don't think it's the right place. Thank you.
Patricia Myers, Bob Brown, Richard Campbell, Ruth Martin, Nancy Culligan.
Mr. Mayor, city council, I think everyone in this room will agree that this is a very important project, and with its success, the need for expansion will become inevitable. In the near future, this will be a reality. There is no place for expansion at the present site. I understand that they cannot even provide the required number of parking spaces, although I think tonight Doug Evans made it clear that perhaps they can fulfill that part. But I would suggest to all of you that Riverside County, the city of Palm Springs, HUD, the Desert Healthcare District, McCormick Baron Salazar, and the Desert AIDS Project, look for a location that can meet these specifications. There are many possibilities in this area. I ask you, why start a project that will be outgrown before it is off the ground?
Bob Brown, Richard Campbell, Ruth Martin, Nancy Culligan, and Rita Harantz. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, sir.
City council, my name is Bob Brown. I represent First Southern Baptist Church, 1111 East Vista Chino in Palm Springs, and I got a phone call before I came to this meeting saying this was already a done deal. So I hope that it's not because I would have much rather been home watching TV. I was invited to two of the homeless task force meetings sometime early last year. We met here at city hall. I was short notice, and they invited me, so I really didn't know what the project was about, so they asked me how I felt about it, and I didn't have any questions except how many on the homeless task force live next to the project or near the project or within two blocks of the project, and no hands went up. And it was at this meeting that I met John Brown for the first time, who I believe owns the Desert AIDS Project building, and his first statement to me was, "If this doesn't go through, something worse could be here." So I didn't know if he was, that was a threat or a promise, or if he was trying to soften me up for the meeting that we were going to have at that time. And it was at that first meeting that's where I met Reverend Andrew Green for the first time, which I still think Reverend Andrew Green is doing a great job on the homeless task force. He told me that he would keep me informed of the progress by way of email, and I'm still waiting. But being a fellow minister, I understand because our workloads are heavy if you're pastoring a church. At the second meeting, my question was, was this location selected by the homeless task force because it was free property? And I got a -- And I got an odd meaning yes to that. Other cities with eighty to one-hundred-and-fifty thousand people where I have served use industrial areas for this type of project, and it works with much success. It doesn't take a rocket scientist, friends, to figure out that you do not put a project of this magnitude in a residential area, much less next door to and in front of a retirement community, and across the driveway from a church, and a half a city block from Raymond Cree Middle School, and two or three blocks from Sunrise Day School. I strongly oppose this location for this project. I've had plenty of guilt put on me ever since the first meeting that I attended. But I have learned that guilt and psychology is not a tool that is necessary to be used if it is right. And I don't believe this is right. I can understand there are three driving forces on this. Free land would be one. That would drive me, if I was looking for church property, I'd be ready to grab it. Removing the homeless from downtown would be another driving force, and I can understand that. And then profit. As a former businessman in San Diego, I understand our city and the need for image. Because when I came to First Southern Baptist Church in Palm Springs, January 1998, they didn't hear anything out of me but image for the first year. It was important that we change our image and upgrade our image. And I can understand the city wanting the image of downtown to be a certain way, and the surrounding area, because that is business. Palm Springs is a tourist city, and image is needed to draw people, because people pay the bills and that run our city. This project, though, is ministry, and I don't believe it was thought through to the point of the impact that it will bring on the neighborhood. And if it had been, then I think there is some kind of an "I don't care" attitude going on with the project. I've already seen signs on the pails that said, "The heck with the neighbors and the Sunrise project." To go a step further, who profits from this? To a local newspaper reporter who asked that question, he answered, "No one, why this is a government deal." Anyone with any common sense knows there's more money made from the government projects than any other project in the world. The need is serious.
Richard Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, after this next few speakers, I'll need to take a break.
The city clerk reports that she has to take a break after the speaker to replace tapes. It's the technology flaw in the system. And with that, we'll all take a quick ten-minute recess, so if you have to freshen up, we'll take that after Richard's done. Richard?
Thank you.
You're the first closer of the evening. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm Richard Campbell. I have lived in Palm Springs, have been a full-time resident in Palm Springs for fifteen years. I fully support the Vista Sunrise Human Services Project for several different reasons. I've seen this city grow, yet not lose the quaintness that gives it a welcoming feeling. We depend largely on our tourism industry, which gives us revenue for city services. Some of those who play a very important role in tourism, the waiters and waitresses, busboys, and valet parkers, must work without health insurance. We depend a great deal on these individuals to ensure that tourists will enjoy themselves and want to come back to our city. We even call upon them to be ambassadors for Palm Springs. And yet, when one of these people or their children gets sick, they must travel up to sixty miles to Moreno Valley and wait the better part of a day to access healthcare. The present county facility on Takwitz is old and outdated, the services you can get there are limited. We need a new facility. Keep in mind, the revenue that these people produce helps pay your wages and keeps the city running. Opponents to this project would like to think that these people are the dregs of humanity, but yet they're perfectly content when these people are serving them in a restaurant or cleaning their homes. And yet, these people, to whom we depend on so much, are faced with a difficult task when it comes to accessing healthcare. The proposed housing component at the Vista Sunrise complex will provide transitional and permanent housing for those living with HIV and AIDS and those with special needs. The proposed housing complex will be monitored and regulated and not be an eyesore to the community. In fact, it'll occupy a field that is presently scattered with litter. We aren't proposing just a brick-and-mortar structure that will shelter people from the elements. We're proposing a place that could give individuals a chance to improve the quality of their lives by getting on their feet, establishing a sense of pride, and becoming a productive member of society. For most, the housing will not be a permanent place of residence, rather a springboard to get back on the right path. By helping people to get their lives back in order and achieve their fullest potential, they will once again be able to contribute to the community in which they live. This proposed project has the possibility to benefit all of us, not just the needy. In closing, might I remind you, a chain is only as strong as its most fragile link. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just to give you an idea of where we're at, this is the number of people that have spoken so far. This is the number of people that want to speak, so we're not quite halfway there. Okay? We'll take a little recess.
...
Ladies and gentlemen, can I have you take your seats, please? We're about to begin. Is your city attorney ready? Very good, we'll call the meeting back to order. I have had one request during the break to bring up, apparently is a student in the audience, I'm gonna bring her up forward so she can get home, get to bed, get back to school for tomorrow. So I'm gonna call Vanessa, is it Vanessa Gary? Vanessa Gary, if you'll come forward at this time, thank you. Followed by Ruth Martin, Nancy Culligan, Rita Harant, and then Ralph Rose. Vanessa, good evening, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Assistant Council. I live across the street from the proposed Sunrise Project, and I attend Raymond Crey as well as my brother and sister. And I've grown up, like my whole family has grown up, being around the people of the Wellin Desert and Palm Springs Food Kitchen, and we've helped a lot with them, and they're really not threatening, and I don't see how people can say they're scared, and it's just... It's, my experience being around them has just brought me satisfaction, knowing that there is hope for them, and it's just unbelievable. But half the people in this audience that have spoken to be against this have mentioned that it's a good idea and good thing, but they don't want it in their backyard, and it is in my backyard, and I'm not worried, and my family's just not worried, and we think it's a good idea, and it's awesome. But it's our community's obligation to help these people, and I am totally for it.
Thank you. Ruth Martin, Nancy Culligan, Rita Harant, and Ralph Rose. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Martin, and I'm resident of Sandalwood Condominium Complex on Sunrise Way, which is right across the street from the planned development. I've lived there for three and a half years. Prior to that, I've lived in the desert, well, I moved there because of the location. I've lived here in the desert, Palm Springs, went to Francis Stephen Elementary School, so I've been here in the desert for 60 years, and seen a lot of things. This move of ours, three and a half years ago, to Sagewood, planned to be my last move. We're retired. We chose the area because of its proximity to grocery stores, bus lines, and you're getting up in age, and I can walk to where I need to go. Never having dreamed that very shortly they would be planning a development of this sort across the street from me. I am not denying that this is a wonderful plan, but the location is wrong. If everything goes like everyone's talking about tonight, this thing is going to flourish, expansion. Why locate it somewhere where right in a couple of years you're going to have to expand? There's lots of land in the desert, that is close to bus lines and so forth. Let's think about moving this project, where I think there's no one here that is out of agreement, that we don't need to do something of this type. But the bottom line, like the realtors just say, "Location, location, location." And I think this is what it is all about. I please, I beg you to consider this tonight. And you're all very sensible people, caring people. And if we want Palm Springs to grow, and bring in tourists, we have to think about everything, not just the business community, but things of this type. So I'm asking you tonight, please think about the location where you're going to place this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nancy Culligan, Rita Harant, Ralph Rose, Keith Noss, and Robert Kane, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Nancy Culligan, and I live here in Palm Springs. I've been impressed, even moved, by the speeches given earlier in the evening about the homeless project. And I think it's a wonderful idea, but I'm going to repeat what the lady who just spoke said, "It's not a good location. It's by too many schools, by too many residents, by too many old people." The problem in Palm Springs, a good thing about Palm Springs, is that we don't have the city lights, and that's what we all like. But the problem is that it's a dimly lit area, and we cannot say that there will not be strangers out. The description of the project made it sound very neat, and they're all gonna be behind big walls, but you don't mean to say that there're gonna be prisoners behind those walls, and we're gonna have a lot of people. Even with 85 homes there, there's gonna be a lot of people there. Sometimes little old ladies that live alone get frightened when strangers come around, and I think that they're gonna be loath to walk their dogs, go to the stores, be out in the evening for fear of these odd people, or strange people, or different people. People that perhaps have alcohol problems, abuse problems, drug problems, mental problems, and they get very nervous. I don't want to repeat what everybody else has said, I just want to say that who's going to promise total responsibility for all these newcomers, especially after dark? And I must also ask this of the council. If this project is a disaster, as some people think it will be, how will you, who have approved it, set it right? I beg you to find a different location. Thank you.
Rita?
My name is Rita Harant. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Palm Springs is a wonderful city, and I truly love living here. I worry, however, when I see businesses and homeowners moving down the valley. We want Palm Springs to remain a city of beauty and culture, and Indian Wells has the tennis tournament, Palm Desert has the wonderful shopping, and what is going to become of Palm Springs? The neighborhood of schools, this neighborhood of schools, senior residences and families will suffer if the project is built among them. People worry about the housing of the homeless with mental illnesses, alcohol, drug, and abuse problems. Fearful of the people and worried about property values, decreasing more and more sale signs will appear. Who can look me in the eye and say that property values in the neighborhood will not decline and crime will not increase? A homeless shelter is needed. I think we're all in favor. Don't believe that it belongs in a residential area. Thank you for your time.
Ralph Rose, followed by Keith Noss, Robert Kane, Paula Auburn, please. Ms. Rose, I'll have you just pull that microphone so it's directly towards your mouth, sir, it'd be better for the audio, we're having some problems in the studio.
We all set?
I think that's good, sir, thank you.
Honorable mayor and honorable members, my name is Ralph Rose, and I live in Palm Springs. We are privileged to have the much-needed Desert AIDS Center here to serve the valley. The Care Center for Uninsured and After Hours Health Care, IFHERE, will also enable us to serve the valley. Part of the project, the 85 housing units for women, has almost been under the radar. None of the 85 units should be allowed, allowed, excuse me, until all legitimate concerns are addressed. If billed at all, that project should be reduced in size, there can always be Phase One or Two. The handouts of the proponents indicate that they will be housing some tenants with mental problems and some guilty of substance abuse. How will those with mental problems be protected against harm to themselves or to others? Other questions: How will the use of drugs and alcohol be legally controlled with only the expected repeated warnings of, "This is definitely your last chance"? As a former city attorney and judge, I asked, "Who will control husbands, abusive or otherwise, boyfriends or would-be boyfriends, or fathers of the children? Who will control the inevitable solicitations to obtain money for drugs or alcohol? Will this project be a holding pen for additional pregnancies? Who will exact any discipline from the children of traumatized mothers?" This hearing is about a radical, radical use, not for the usual housing or business uses. This is a request for almost carte blanche uses, to be managed by an only-for-profit corporation to treat the whole range of human frailties. This zoning should be denied. However, if constructed, before construction, we must have firm controls. It is a very unusual project, maybe the first of its kind, as no other has been mentioned. So you should not, and hopefully will not, approve zoning until uses and limitations are reviewed by you and your legal department, and then set fully forth in writing. I have sat here and listened as a judge would listen in a courtroom tonight, and there is an overwhelming preponderance of evidence as to the need of this project, but not one whit, not one whit of evidence that it needs to be at the requested site. Thank you.
I'll ask for Keith Noss, followed by Robert Kane, Paula Auburn, Corinne Sanderson, and Gwendolyn Battle? Mr. Noss?
My name is Keith Canaus.
Sorry, sir, thank you.
It's okay. Thank you, Mayor and city council members.
I have trouble with names, they start with K, I'm sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with the mayor and council members tonight. I'm gonna begin with a statement from a new neighbor in our neighborhood in Sunrise Racquet Club. This is a person who could not be here tonight. His name is Mark Weiss. He's a project manager in the city of San Diego. Mark moved into our neighborhood in December and has spent every weekend since then totally renovating his home. He is an ideal neighbor. This is what Mark had to say, and again, he's sorry he can't be here, and he asked me to read his statement. "I have recently purchased a home in Sunrise Racquet Club that I intend to make my residence. I'm deeply concerned about the development at the corner of Sunrise and Visacino. This could not come at a worse time for the recovery effort and revitalization of Palm Springs, and specifically the area in question. At 34, I represent a vibrant young shift in demographics," obviously I'm reading Mark Weiss's statement, not my own, "that accounts for much of the positive growth in Palm Springs. We're moving from San Diego, Orange County, and Los Angeles, purchasing homes and pouring millions into the local economy. We are trying to escape high-crime areas, panhandling, and drug dealers. Putting a magnet for these activities in the center of this newly thriving and vibrant community will not attract others like me to invest in real estate or consider making this home. I, as do others like me, understand the vital need for social services, but at what price? We are willing to have our tax dollars and our considerable Desert AIDS projects donations used to fund services for the needy. However, to ask us to be burdened with higher crime rates, drug dealing, panhandling, and the mentally ill roaming our neighborhood is unreasonable, especially when there are several other sites that would not create such a negative environmental impact. You must take into consideration much more than the free land available at this particular site. Properly researching other available parcels in less inhabited areas can produce a site that can accomplish the goal of serving those less fortunate while protecting our interests. As a project manager for the city of San Diego, I'm well aware of the ramifications of an ill-conceived development. Politicians are held accountable for bad decisions in the city of San Diego, and I'm certain politics and public will are no different in the city of Palm Springs. Bad projects that cause harm, monetary and physical, to your constituents will haunt you the rest of your political career. If you truly want to see Palm Springs' growth continue, then you need to listen to those who put you in office and make sure that projects such as this are better planned." Those are Mark's words. On my own behalf, I want to say these things. In the last several months, I've talked with numerous neighborhood residents, many of them are older women living alone. They're well-informed about the project and have expressed great concern about it. They have very serious fears for their safety and health should the project be completed. Younger neighbors have expressed concerns about the safety and health of their children who are enrolled in one of the three schools within a few blocks of the proposed project. I personally had hoped to grow older in the city that I love, in this diverse and improving neighborhood. Unfortunately, I will have to reevaluate my plans if this project is approved at the Sunrise and Visacino location. I believe there are better locations for the project. For example, why can't the Riverside County facility across from City Hall be renovated and expanded to provide for the county's portion of the project? Shouldn't we be recycling and reusing rather than using up more land? And wouldn't the existing high-density locations such as Coyote Run be more appropriate for the 85 housing units proposed in this project? Both of these locations are well-served by the excellent Sunline bus system. Thank you for your service to the citizens of Palm Springs. I urge you to act in their best interests and reject this entire proposal."
Thank you, Mr. Robert Kane, followed by Paula Auburn, Corinne Sanderson, and Gwyneth Battle. Mr. Kane?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm an old resident of Palm Springs, old, I'm a resident of Palm Springs for 31 years. I'm over 80, and I have to do a lot of walking. One of the things that bothered me in this whole project is the fact that we, along with my grandchildren and other residents of my age group, don't drive very much anymore, so we walk. There's a large shopping center up on both sides of the street around this project. Now, the little old ladies and little old men, walking with their groceries, I know are going to be accosted by people who, hey, they see somebody that they can perhaps get some change from. It happens to me every day at the post office, it happens to me on street corners downtown, and there's no question about the fact that it will happen in this area, because this is gonna be concentrated. Because once the word gets out in California that this is gonna be a wonderful place for the homeless, for the indigent, whatever, to come down here and be taken care of, you will see a mass incidence, not an exodus, but an incidence into this town, which is going to affect everyone who lives here. And I urge you to be very careful about looking out for the citizens who have to pass that corner. The children who go to school, people who go to church, people who go shopping, there's a lot of foot traffic there for that reason. And I want your consideration. Thank you.
Paula Auburn, please.
Thank you. My name is Paula Auburn, and I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and to speak to this project. This project is a paradox. In my 19 years as a redevelopment commissioner with the city of South Bend in Indiana, I've been involved in the establishment of a full-service homeless center that in South Bend is considered one of the national models. It has housing, short-term and transitional, it just expanded, it has onsite healthcare, onsite job training, and a Montessori school for the children. I've also been involved in looking for locations to expand our Hope Rescue Mission. I've also been involved in looking for locations and helped initiate the YWCA's Abuse Shelter for abused women and children. With the exception of the latter, none of these are in a residential area. Location decisions are never easy, whether one sits in your seat or not, but to put the size of this project and the magnitude of this project that creates a critical mass in the middle of a thriving neighborhood of 800 to 1,000 homes is probably, in my estimation, if I were sitting in your seat, not what I would call good common sense. One of the things that has struck me about the people speaking for this project is that I think they have painted an excellent picture for the need for such a project. I do resent being named or... I do resent being named or implied as someone who is uncaring and hard-hearted because I'm not supporting the location of this project. My concern is that by implication, that they are forcing you into a corner so that you feel that if you decide against this project, that you have in fact decided against being a humane human being. That is not true. There's a logical fallacy that's being painted here this evening. Whose mission is it to protect the neighborhoods and the neighborhood residents? Is it McCormick and Salazar's? No. They have a business mission. They're in business to make a profit, and from this project, they will make a profit. Whose mission is it? What is the mission of the clergy? The mission of the clergy is to speak for, address the concerns of not only lost souls, spiritually speaking, but lost souls physically speaking. They have fulfilled their mission here this evening. But whose mission is it to speak for neighborhoods and neighborhood residents? We are not an organized block of individuals. We see you as our voice. We see you as the keepers of that mission. I love this community. I bought my condo three years ago after coming here, spending Christmas vacations, because my brother lives here with the nieces and nephews. I have absolutely fallen in love with Palm Springs. I do not want to move. I will not make a blanket threat that I will sell and move, but I will certainly watch the development. I'm young enough now that I don't feel physically threatened. My youngest brother, not the one that lives here—I don't want you running around thinking anybody with the name of Auburn here locally went through a drug rehab program—but my youngest brother went through a drug rehab program. I do not look at the homeless as ogres. I do not look at those with mental illness as ogres or bad people. I do not look at those who go through drug rehab and have these needs as less-than-human. I wake up every morning and say, "Thank God, but for the grace of God go I." I've had numerous advantages in life, and I am extremely thankful for that. I am concerned about growing older in this location because generally around the country, when something like this goes into a neighborhood, it is a little bit like a cancer, and it slowly eats away, and I do not want to be more frail and age 80 and feel as if I'm a prisoner in my home. My heart goes out to some of the senior citizens that have spoken before you who said they already feel that should this project go into effect, that they will in fact be prisoners. Fear, whether it is real or perceived, is still fear in that mind. I personally make a commitment that as a volunteer, I will help work to try to find a good location for this project. One of the first things I did moving here was contact the Director of United Way to find out about what social services were available. I've participated in the Martin Luther King activities. I'm a volunteer at the Palm Canyon Theater. I don't want to be just a fair-weather resident. I'm willing to jump in and help. Thank you.
Corinne Sanderson, followed by—go ahead.
Go ahead. My name is Corinne Sanderson. I just moved here as a full-time resident in Sagewood, purchased my first home in my life. I just moved from Santa Monica, so I'm a very well-versed person on homelessness, and what I'm about to tell you is not exaggerated because I've been there 40 years and I've seen what happened. It started with the mayor of Santa Monica allowing the homeless people to come into Santa Monica. They bust them in by the busloads from all over the country because they know now they can do this. Now they're trying to pass a law so they can't come in there. They ruin all the parks. They sleep in your carports. They fall into your apartment in the morning when you open the door. They accost you everywhere. You walk out of a restaurant, they're standing out there begging everywhere. They sleep in the doorways of all the businesses. It's gotten so bad. And you go to the grocery store, they're in the parking lot wanting to wash your car windows. It has become a real zoo, and if you have enough police force to handle all the complaints, that will be another issue to look at. It's not a fun thing. I think the location is bad. I'm not for the daycare center because after 4:00, they're going to come down and sleep in my patio and defecate like they did where I lived, and I lived north of Wilshire, which was a very nice area. And I have empathy for these people, but my son carries lunches in his trunk for these people when they say they want food. I don't want that. I want money so they can go buy their drugs. They've been in my carport drinking beer and yelling at me not to come in and park my car, and they do drugs. And I mean, I lived in a nice side of town, and I moved here to get away from all that and the crazy traffic and everything. Downtown at night, there's sleeping bags in every doorway, and that's what you're going to be facing right here, whether you know it or not. They'll bring them in by the truckloads. It isn't going to be the people that you have here that is going to be your concern. And I wanted to get away from that, and here I am in the middle of something coming on again. So I hope you reconsider the location of this place and not do the daycare center unless you're going to have them have a place to sleep because they're going to come right across the street and sleep in our places, and that isn't going to be good. Thank you.
Paul for Gwendolyn Battle, followed by Sheila Brown, Wallace Brown, Shirley Moore, and Margot Hertz. Gwendolyn?
Thank you. Glad you got my name this time. I'm Gwendolyn Battle. I live at 1421 North Sunrise Way. I am and have been a voting, tax-paying, and law-abiding citizen of Palm Springs for 24 years. I'd like to make it a few more. I want to express my extreme disappointment and disgust that you, as our elected officials, would even consider making the decision to support a homeless daycare center so near 112 tax-paying and law-abiding citizens. Please, please, all of you, think seriously of the ramifications of this decision. Thank you very much.
Sheila Brown, followed by Wallace Brown, Shirley Moore, and Margot Hertz.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Sheila Brown, and I've lived here in Palm Springs for five years. I urge you to vote in favor of this project. Before we moved here, we lived in San Jose, and our home was between two churches and three schools. There was a homeless project in two of the churches. It was a rotating shelter so that they were one month in one church, one month in another church. There's an elementary school a block away from one of the churches. One of the churches also had a daycare. A high school and middle school was like four blocks away from another church. We never had any incident of the homeless. We never saw them. I didn't know the homeless were there. I was active in the project, so I did know they were there, but I never saw them. They had access to buses, as this project has, and I think this project is a very worthwhile one. I would urge you, however, to consider the drop-in center because many of the homeless need a place to shower, to have a place for mail, to have a place to apply for a job with an address, that you would certainly benefit them. I don't live in the neighborhood at this time, but I lived in a neighborhood before with the homeless. I had no problem, and I hope that you will see fit to vote for this problem. Thank you very much.
Wallace Brown, followed by Shirley Moore, Margot Hertz, Paul Coughlin, and Michelle Martin, please.
My name is Wallace Brown, and I live in San Jose, obviously. My wife, we live here in Palm Springs. I was involved with starting a rotating church shelter in San Jose, which one synagogue, eight Protestant churches, and three Catholic churches participated in, in which we would take a group of 15 homeless men for a period of four or five weeks. The neighborhood that we lived in was Willow Glen, was an upscale neighborhood. The houses used to sell for half a million, and now they're all selling for a million. And our home was located between these two churches that sheltered these men. The success rate was 80% of these people were able to obtain housing after being in the program for three months. There's a similar program to this in San Jose. Now, it's very important—we found that about 35% of the homeless want to be homeless. There's nothing you can do about them. But about 60, 65% were willing to try to get a job. The best job we got for them was a man at that time making $70,000. But to do that, you need a resident address, you need a telephone service, you need email service, so that you have somewhere that you may be reached so that you can get your job and get your interviews. You need a place to take a shower and clean up, and I assure you that you will have fewer homeless in Palm Springs if you do this program because a certain percent of them want to get back on their feet, and it will work. Now, also, so the idea of your houses depreciating in value, I do not believe that. It certainly did not happen in San Jose, and I doubt that it'll happen here. Also, the idea that—lost my train of thought. Sorry. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Shirley Moore, followed by Margot Hertz, Paul Coughlin, Michelle Martin, and Dean Sismore.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Moore. I'm a retired school teacher having taught for 30 years. I've owned property here in Palm Springs for 27 years. I am president of Ranch Club Palm Estates located immediately adjacent to the proposed Vista Sunrise campus. I will be reading a letter written by one of our homeowners. This letter expresses the feelings of all of our 112 residents. "It has taken many years for the neighborhood surrounding the corner of Vista Chino and Sunrise to fully develop, but at last it has. The full block of new homes bordering Sunrise Way and Racka Club Road, along with a series of new homes on Vista Chino across from the school, basically filled the vacant land available for single-family residences. Today, we have a fully-integrated neighborhood, including schools, churches, grocery stores, and shops, that fulfill most of our service needs. We are able to walk to these places of business in relative safety, day or night. In other words, the Sunrise-Vista Chino neighborhood is a reality. It exists, and those of us who live here like it and want to stay. Why would the city of Palm Springs choose to redesignate the use of the property in the center of this well-developed neighborhood? For the purpose of serving hundreds of high-risk, unstable people. Why put all of us who already live here at risk because of your actions? If you approve this project, we will be forced to build our fences, walls, and gates higher. Our homeowners' association will have to consider hiring an armed, full-time security staff in order to be safe as we are today. Is the city of Palm Springs so in need of space that now has the health services occupy across the street that you are willing to unload the clientele in the heart of our residential neighborhood? We understand that the staff of the transitional housing is trained in how to deal with the clientele with homicidal and suicidal behavior. Who is going to teach us how to protect ourselves when we encounter these same people who live a few hundred feet away from our homes? The code of common sense should dictate that the city of Palm Springs project, the Sunrise-Vista Chino neighborhood—excuse me—that the city of Palm Springs should protect the Vista Chino neighborhood rather than take steps that will lead to deterioration. The Vista Sunrise Health and Human Services Campus belongs in an industrial or undeveloped area so that anyone locating in the vicinity would know in advance what they expect and when they choose that location. We understand that down deep, many of the advocates of the Vista Sunrise Health and Human Services Campus at this location do so to make sure that it won't end up in their neighborhood. It is much easier to be an advocate of a cause when it doesn't put your own lifestyle in jeopardy. If you approve this project, you leave its neighbors with the choice of living in fear or selling at a loss. Realtors specializing in sales of condominiums in our location adjacent to the proposed project tell us there will be little or no buyers of interest today due to the fear of living next door to the Vista Sunrise Health and Human Services Campus. Our problems have already begun. We are being economically disadvantaged in advance, and the realtors tell us it will only get worse. Please protect the Sunrise-Vista Chino neighborhood. We are already here. We need the city council's help in preserving our safety and the value of our property. Thank you."
Margot Hertz, followed by Paul Coughlin, Michelle Martin, Dean Sismore, and Nancy Banks, please.
Mr. Mayor—
Could you pull that microphone down a little bit, hon, so we can hear you a little better?
Is this better?
I think so.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Margot Hertz, and I'm one of those little old ladies you just heard about before. I live at Ranch Club at 1409 North Sunrise. The Ranch Club building in which I live happens to be immediately adjacent to the proposed center. The prospect of its construction and all its consequences not only gives me nightmares but makes me a very scared little old lady. You see, for me, as Yogi Berra would say, this is like déjà vu all over again. I spent most of my life in Chicago after coming to this country as a child, a victim of Hitler, so that I know firsthand what it is like to be without a home, without a country, and without a family. My parents and I were the only ones to survive, and we were fortunate enough to come to the United States where we had the opportunity to breathe freely, live in freedom, and start over again on our own, and we made it. For the 27 years prior to coming to Palm Springs permanently, I lived in a condominium very conveniently located, and we could walk everywhere in relative safety. And then, just a block away from us, and for about a mile in either direction, the neighborhood was turned into a project similar to what is being proposed here. Well, it turned into a disaster, and we were literally living on the edge of a slum, just as we will be here. We could no longer walk on the streets, and our building had 24-hour security. Worst of all was that for the next 20 years, I watched the value of my home drop more and more, so that even had I wanted to, I could not afford to sell it. Finally, the code of common sense prevailed, which said that you cannot sacrifice the health, safety, and welfare of an entire tax-paying, voting, residential population, and thanks to the hard work of neighborhood coalitions and condo boards, slowly, ever so slowly, the neighborhood began to be restored. Three and a half years ago, I was finally able to sell my condo and came to Palm Springs to retire in this peaceful, conveniently-located neighborhood after spending a lifetime of hard work and paying my dues to family and society. I thought I was free, free at last to take my morning walks without fear, to walk to the store, to the cleaner, to the hairdresser, to restaurants without looking over my shoulder. I really did not envision my golden years having to spend money for armed guards to protect us at night when walking from our carports to our condos, nor did I ever consider that the value of my property may go down the tubes along with the rest of the neighborhood. As I said before, déjà vu all over again. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, think about it. Are you really willing to destroy a well-settled neighborhood which has just recently come into its own and jeopardizing the health, safety, and welfare of its residents who are voters and taxpayers? Are you willing to have this cancer inflicted on us and rammed down our Are you willing to have this cancer inflicted on us and rammed down our throats, thus literally making prisoners of many of us, hiding behind the spiked walls which some of our boards are now considering erecting? Do you have the right to restrict us from moving freely in the neighborhood where we chose to live? Or alternately, are you willing to follow the code of common sense and find a more appropriate location for the erection of a homeless health and housing campus? Would it not be better to turn us from fearful, angry antagonists into friends who would be willing to help in any way possible with such a project? Believe me when I tell you that contrary to the opinion of many, we do not hate the homeless. We know they present a problem that must be addressed. Well, let us address it together by finding a more suitable location for a human services center. Until such a location is found, we must consider the proposed Vista Sunrise Human Services Center as the blight of Palm Springs. Mr. Mayor, you want to be proud of Palm Springs, and so do we. Let us not have to advertise this world-class city as the playground of the homeless at the expense of little old ladies like myself.
My name is Paul Coughlin. I live at fourteen oh seven North Sunrise. Good evening, Your Honor, members of the city council. This idea may look good on paper, but it's the placement, it's the rub. There's an old saying that the road to hell is paved with good intent, and we got like eight lanes going. Um, I'm not afraid of the homeless. I mean, you know, I do have a little weight advantage. But, never mind, these people are my neighbors, not the homeless. My neighbors. Um, I'm here because they're gonna, they are afraid. They're petrified. They're like, what are we gonna do? You know? This was my shangri-la, and they pulled the carpet out for me. So I'm going to ask you to vote against this project. I'd also like to remind you of one very important thing that no one has mentioned about the homeless. They don't vote, but we do. Thank you very much.
I show Michelle Martin, Dean Sismore, Nancy Banks, Mel Schneider, and Dr. Wayne McKinney, please.
Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry you're feeling so poorly. Um, my name is Michelle Martin, and I'm here representing the Board of Directors for Desert Sunshine Preschool and as a concerned mother. Desert Sunshine and the Montessori Elementary School are located just northeast of the proposed Vista Sunrise project. That is only a couple hundred yards away. Desert Sunshine has been at this location for twenty-three years. The parents of over, of well over a hundred children entrust us with their safety and wellbeing of their children. On Thursday, February sixth, these children, in our care, had to experience a very traumatic event. Two drug dealers jumped over the wall of their playground, followed by numerous officers with guns drawn. This time, there were over twenty children and five teachers in the playground. Our playground is not large, only about eighteen hundred square feet, surrounded on all sides by a block wall, which in some areas is only three or four feet tall. Too tall for kids to scramble over to get away, but low enough for adults to jump over and to jump into the playground. So to have these additional people on the playground made for a very dangerous situation. Our children had to experience up close and personal the trauma of police shouting, "Stop or I'll shoot." It is sad that their innocent view of the world was lost at such a young age. The chances of this project bringing an exact recurrence of these events are very small, but there is a very real possibility that these children will find themselves sharing their playground again with individuals that should not be there should this project go through. It has been mentioned that there will be strict intake requirements to qualify for the transitional housing. It is most likely that the mentally-challenged homeless people are not going to meet these requirements to be accepted into the transitional housing. These are going to be the homeless, the homeless that will end up on our playground. Walls that will off, walls, they will have walls that will offer privacy. There is shade, there's picnic tables, drinking fountains, a perfect spot for the homeless to spend their time from four P.M. until eight A.M. Needless to say, they will also need to relieve themselves. Will our children's playground become the homeless person's bathroom? We are also extremely concerned about the mental stability of people that will be using our school grounds as a motel. It has happened before that a person, that the person opening the school in the morning has found a person camping out on the grounds. When the police were called to remove the person, it was told that it was a shift change, and it would be a while before someone could be there. Will our children have to forego the right of using their playground until the police shift change is over? It's my understanding police shift changes at seven A.M. The first children arrive at the school at seven A.M. Will parents even consider entrusting their, entrusting our school with their children if they see homeless on our doorstep? Doubtful. At the planning commission meeting, the proponents of this project heard our concerns about the area becoming a magnet for homeless, and when asked over and over again what would happen to the homeless after four o'clock in the afternoon, not one even dared address the question. The majority of the proponents spoke, that spoke at the planning commission meeting were directly tied to the project in one way or another, but not one of them addressed our concerns. The answer to our question was a hot potato that no one wanted to touch because they had no answer. We do not dispute the need, but we strongly believe this is an inappropriate area for this project, and it is not inappropriate use for the land. This is a valley-wide problem, and one that should be handled by SEVAG. On a personal note, lest that I appear that I do not understand and I'm not concerned with the needs and clientele of Desert AIDS Project. Seventeen years ago, in February nineteen eighty-six, my father had the dubious distinction of being one of the first ten thousand people to die of AIDS-related complications in the United States. I know firsthand the suffering that people with HIV and AIDS must endure. I watched my father waste away. Back then, there was no Desert AIDS Project or support group. I know that DAP is a vital source for the members of this community. I hope they will not lose their relevancy in the midst of this project, because it seems like this project is trying to be everything to everyone. As you know, you know what they say, "Jack of all trades, master of none." Right now, Desert AIDS Project is the master in what they do. My fear is that Desert AIDS Project is, if Desert AIDS Project is surrounded by so many other nonprofit agencies with their fundraising hounds outstretched, the losing agency will be Desert AIDS Project, and that would be a shame after all the good that they have done.
Mr. Dean Sismore, Nancy Banks, Mel Schneider, Dr. Wayne McKinney, and David Justin Lynch, please.
Good evening. My name is Dean Sismore. I'm a, have a condo at the Sage Wood Complex, seventeen forty-two Sage, Sandalwood. It's been his home, second home for ten years. We are against the proposed homeless shelter at the Sunrise Vista Chino, um, location. We feel the overall project and concept has a solid foundation, but the location is not large enough, and residential neighborhoods of poor choice. We applaud the planning commission for eliminating the daycare center, but think that is only a start to ensure the success of the program. We'd like to point out that the speakers at the planning commission were two to one against the project, and that the majority of the pro-project speakers had had financial gain by the passage of the project. We do not believe adequate studies have been done to allow this project in a residential neighborhood. Most information presented to the planning commission was informally complied, such as crime, traffic, usage number, et cetera. We'd like to see, or kind of insist to see, official, professional, unbiased, compiled impact reports before this project gets off the ground. We're concerned about the proposed reduced parking requirements. I know it's been addressed here. The homeless center might not always be at this site. The parking will be inadequate for future tenants. It's our suggestion that the coalition of groups that brought this project to life will continue to work together, sell that current, sell the current land, and repurchase a larger, more suitable site. Thank you.
Mel Schneider.
Thank you, sir.
Is Dr. Wayne McKinney here? Followed by David Justin Lynch, please, and then, go ahead, sir. Mr. Schneider.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mel Schneider. I am not a resident of Palm Springs. However, for three months of the year, my attitude is one that I am a member. And it is for this reason I'd like to say something tonight, because neither at the planning commission meeting or tonight have I heard anybody representing snowbirds. Now, I don't want to take the position that I am speaking for all snowbirds, but because I think it's an important issue to you people here, because of the obvious change in the population of the community during the months of January, February, and March, I thought it might be important to say something. My wife and I have been coming to Ranch Club for over ten years, and we hope to continue to do so in the future. It is for this reason that I'd like to offer a few insights from my perspective. The history of Ranch Club includes a period of time when a vacant building adjacent to the Ranch Club property became a haven for homeless people. These homeless people felt that it was permissible to trespass, to take advantage of the amenities offered at the Ranch Club. The local police were used to intervene. It would be reasonable to assume, with the proposal under consideration, that the neighborhood would be populated by homeless people. This leads to the probability that a cost for securing the neighborhood from trespass should be added to the overall cost of the project. In addition, it is possible that our ability to walk to the shopping areas without fear of being accosted may change. This is not intended to say all homeless are bad, but even a few whose values are questionable may make it bad for all. This problem may be difficult to solve, and also introduces a cost that should be part of the project. If these additional costs are passed on to the owners of the Ranch Club, and they impact the cost of rentals, those of us that are retired and living on fixed incomes may have a problem returning to Palm Springs. A good percentage of our disposable income is spent here in the three months of our visit. We frequent the local merchants for our needs because of the closeness of their establishments. The solution to the problem of the homeless should be addressed and have a high priority. However, the geographic location should not be a detriment to the homeowners and merchants. Let me summarize my comments by saying that because snowbirds can easily relocate, you may be exchanging a few hundred homeless for a few hundred snowbirds at Ranch Club Sage Wood and the Racket Club. The economic impact to this community should be obvious. Thank you for allowing me to express my thoughts on this matter of my concern.
Dr. Wayne McKinney, followed by David Justin Lynch, Clifford, is it Silvee? And Ian Sudano. Dr. McKinney.
My name is, my name is Dr. Wayne McKinney, and I'm here to speak for the speechless, for those without a voice, and I'm here to speak for those that I don't recognize when I hear the people here tonight talk about the homeless. I don't recognize who they're talking about, and I've worked with the homeless for nine years here in Palm Springs, and I don't recognize what you're talking about. But I do recognize the difference between those who are speaking for this project and those that aren't. Those who are speaking for the project are speaking for themselves, but we are speaking for others. Now, there is so many irrational fears that I have heard tonight. You know, I really can't believe it, and one of those is property values. The man from San Jose really said it, and I want you to know that the night before, I mean, right before that planning council, uh, planning commission meeting, the largest board of realtors in the Coachella Valley had a big knock-down-and-drag-out fight, because they were supposed to come over here, and I'd gotten word of it, they were supposed to come over here and speak against the project. But whenever they looked at the facts, they found out it wasn't so. The values do not go down, and in the studies that have been done, they did not go down. And locally, an example is a valley restart in Hemet. Now, they're one block from downtown area. The values didn't change there. And let me tell you, there should be a letter here tonight from Windermere telling you about a home that sold for over eight hundred thousand dollars in Mirador, and it's gonna close on the tenth of this month, and it was with full disclosure written and by the realtor, and it still sold for that amount of money. But see, this is used to create, by some of the opposition, used to create all of these irrational fears among the people who live in that area. And then, another example is about the hanging out. When we served all those years over at Community Church, the homeless did not hang out in the neighborhood afterwards. And since we've been the Fri building, they haven't been hanging out there. And when it comes to like, um, I didn't laugh at you, don't laugh at me. When they talk about the, where are they gonna go at four o'clock? Well, they go at four o'clock where they always go, and that's to try to find the safest place that they can be. And they're not hanging around after we finish, and they're not gonna hang around over there. And I run a tight ship to begin with, but I tell you, they just, it's, they're looking for a safe place to be. Now, another example is that church and school. Well, I've got news for you, ladies and gentlemen. There's a church and school in every neighborhood in Palm Springs. And the sleazy insinuation is that, of course, we have no problems now, no pedophiles or criminals among the people, the non-homeless people who live in our neighborhood, but oh, when you become homeless, you automatically lose all your morals, and it's all the homeless that are the, the real criminals and pedophile, just, just the homeless. And all of these things, if you allow these irrational fears and these lies and these slimy insinuations to become public policy, then ever contentious issue that comes before this council will be presenting you with the same kind of thing. And I tell you, that raising, that ignorance to public policy is exactly what kept segregation going in the South.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. David Justin Lynch.
Good evening, members of the council, and good evening, fellow citizens. All of us take for granted a place to take a shower, a place to make a phone call, to receive mail, and perform other functions of daily living. But that's not true as to the constituency that the Sunrise Vista Chino product, project will serve. What this audience here, or certain members of it, has made these people out to be is the modern-day version of lepers. In ancient times, there was a group of people who had a disease, and they were shunned, and nobody wanted to have anything to... nobody wanted to have anything to do with them. Well, that same concept has made its way through several millennia, where nowadays we have another disfavored group, just as in the beginning of this century, in the 19th century, we had the African-Americans. Then it was the Irish, then it was the Polish, and then it was women. Well, now it's homeless people. They supposedly have all these stereotypical characteristics that automatically makes them bad, and that is the foundation of the opposition. It's stereotype, it's pure prejudice, and nothing but. Well, the United States Supreme Court had something to say about that thinking in a case called City of Claiborne, Texas versus the Claiborne Living Center. And for those of you who follow this sort of thing, the site on it is 473 U.S. 432. And the facts of the case were that the Claiborne Living Center decided to open a home for the mentally retarded in a residential neighborhood. And just as happened here, a bunch of the local opposition got together and besieged the city government and said that we think if you let the mentally retarded in the neighborhood, that they're going to do all this sort of nonsense. They're going to drive down the property values, they're going to make life miserable, et cetera, et cetera. But all of this was based on fear. All of this was based on prejudice. It did not have a rational basis. And when this case got to the United States Supreme Court, they said that in order for a city to turn down a project like that, it had to have a rational basis to do so, some set of articulable facts, not local opposition, not fear, not prejudice. And for that reason, I asked that the city council approve the project. However, I believe that the project is incomplete without the homeless drop-in center. The homeless drop-in center is the first step that people take from the streets to civilized society. It's the fact that somebody is homeless, without a job, can't find a place to live. It's the first step that they need to start achieving the long road to personal dignity. And without that particular component, the center is incomplete. I also agree with some of the speakers that eventually we do need a shelter, we do need a place for these folks to lay their head. But in any event, the opposition that you've heard tonight is based on pure fear. Now, I heard something on television, I can't recall when I heard it, about fear, but it was a very apt description, that fear doesn't bake bread and fear doesn't build bridges, it's useless. And I urge the city council to ignore fear, simply because it is irrational. It's not based on any facts that would fulfill the rational basis standard that the United States Supreme Court says that you have to have to turn this type of project down. And in closing, I'd like to say that taking care of the least among us is not simply something that we do out of convenience for the merchants. It is a moral duty that we have as a society, as a city, to serve the least among us and to make their life as comfortable as we possibly can so that they can, again, get themselves on the road to dignity to become successful persons just like the rest of us. Thank you and good night.
Clifford Sylvie, Ian Sudano, Rose Thieran, Hal Ball.
Mr. Mayor, and the council, the residents. I'm also a resident of Palm Springs and have been a resident since August of 2001.
And your name, sir?
Ian Sudano.
Thank you.
The one thing that I have to say, though, is that I'm actually perceived as the enemy here tonight. I moved to the city in August of 2001 and shortly after 9/11, lost my job. Within three months, I was in this position that many people will be coming to the city, and that is that I was homeless. To the assistance that I received from Desert AIDS Project and to the assistance that I received from ECS, Episcopal Community Services, and their transitional housing unit, I was able to turn my life around. And having worked for the last 12 months, been in my own home for the last 12 months, due to the assistance and the lessons that I learned from ECS, which is the organization that will run the transitional housing, I'm able to stand here tonight and tell you how much I feel that I have achieved by being involved with these two organizations. Not only did they take me off the street or put me into housing when I was about to lose my apartment, they taught me the living skills and how to become productive, regroup, and relearn on how to really become a citizen that I think I'm now proud to be. There are amazing resources that the city, that the state, and that the project, Desert AIDS Project and ECS, the organization, offer. But without the type of organizations, those organizations having an area in which they can teach people how to achieve, they will never, ever be able to succeed as much as I think they can. ECS has five or six homes in Cathedral City, and most of the people that have gone to that housing have gone on to living in their own homes, own apartments, have successful jobs, have totally had the opportunity with all the services to turn their lives around. I don't want to, and I don't believe that I emanate fear that the people in the area are talking about. I live very close to that area as well. I know that I'm a lot younger than a lot of the people who are talking about it, but I don't think that I'm here to make any of you frightened, and I don't believe that any of the people who'll be living in this area will do the same. It is such an opportunity, and there are people who will not see the opportunity, but on the whole, the success rate that ECS has and can show you in writing, the success rate is so incredible because it is such an amazing opportunity. We cannot allow this project not to go forward. Thank you.
Rose Thieran, Hal Ball, Mario Chivani, David Weaver, and Antoinette Laura. Good evening. Rose?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and city council members, you've seen me here before talking on behalf of the homeless. As a matter of fact, I was a member of the Homeless Task Force from 1999 until 2001, when I couldn't, no longer attend the meetings because of work conflicts. During the two years I was there, Mr. Mayor, you paid us a visit. We were looking for a location. And during that time, there were committees going out, doing research, going to other cities. We plugged in all the county services that are going to be represented here, and we went as far as we could go and we became dark because we did not have a location. I heard the word "industrial," let's take it to an industrial location. There had been the well-in-a-desert feeding in an industrial location, and the people didn't want them there either. Now, we had a new city manager who wanted to address the problem, and so he reconvened the task force. And he came to us, and he was going to work with us. But about four or five months later, John Brown entered the scene, and the task force and the Desert AIDS Project formed this coalition to move forward because part of the task force daycare center was to include social services. It would be fruitless to have a facility where we couldn't offer services. And I think the Desert AIDS Project had the same problem. They needed to plug people in somewhere, and they didn't have a place to do that. And now, I want to talk about, it's what Dale Carnegie says, "You can't talk about anything unless you've earned the right to talk about it." Now, I can talk about homelessness from a personal point of view. I can talk about it from working with homeless in the Orange County area, being on the task force in Orange County, and I can also talk about it with my dissertation that I did, my study. Someone else pointed out, you know, some ancient history. Well, I have some history too, and the history is, we've always had homeless. The history is, there was a time in a period in history when it was considered noble to serve the poor, that women of nobility left their positions to enter convents to take care of the poor. In every parish, there was a poorhouse that people's needs were met. And this comes down to, originally, it was the church's responsibility, and now I hear people freaking out because, "Oh, it's going to be near a church." God forbid if it's going to be near a church. That's the church's responsibility. And we, as people of the community, are the church, and we should not be looking at people that are homeless like they're some kind of a plague, like was suggested. They are human beings. Everyone has a story. I've talked to them. I've lived among them. I know what they do, and I know that there are a certain segment of the homeless population that will never be rehabilitated because they did fall through the cracks. And I've seen where women coming into, I worked at Martha House, which is an Episcopal place in Orange County, a woman came in and refused to take a shower. She refused to take the shower because she did not want to lose the odor that she had that protected her against all of you. So she was not a candidate for the program. But there are people that, once they reach a certain point, there is a point of no return. They learn to live on animal instincts. So I am here to speak on behalf of the day center and ask you to reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hal, I'm going to ask you just to hold on a minute. I've had a request for a point of personal privilege, which is an acronym for saying they want to take a break. So we'll take a quick break here.